Going to call the meeting to order. Dr. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, that's loud. Let's start with the minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
I have something to add.
Can you hold on one second? I just want to make sure Phyllis gets. I always look at Phyllis to make sure she's writing stuff down here. Okay.
Yeah, page six after Dr. Brown's comments on the NASDAQ study. I had some fairly substantial comments to make about why this study was important. And I gave Phyllis the copy just now, and I'd like to read them into the minutes. This is transcribed from the video. The reason this study was done and is important has to do with the Balancing Act. We have a certain amount of resources. We have to allocate them the best possible ways we can. The School Board Association states the key role and responsibility of a school board is the development of a budget that serves the needs of the students while simultaneously respecting the ability of taxpayers to fund such a system. This is about sustainability. We've had year after year of teachers' budgets failing because the operating budgets were too high. Again, this is about balance. The NASDAQ study has come up with eight possible ways we can do this. As a community, we have to take a serious look at these options and determine what we're going to take seriously. Because we cannot continually go to the taxpayers and ask them to pay a substantially higher cost per student than surrounding towns. If we look at our cost per student compared to surrounding towns, the range is from 8.9% higher to 37.6% higher. At the same time, we want to be able to give teachers raises. We have to be competitive. The balancing of all these areas is why we had to do this study and why we must give it serious consideration. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. I should mention that Cory Mason is offsite. You can probably see him. I can see him here. Is he? No, that's okay. You can see him here. All right.
Is that in focus now?
Okay. Manifest is working its way around?
Agenda's a little bit blurry, folks. If somebody in the tech team could... Scott? Brian?
We have no resignations. We have no nominations. Superintendent Tennis report.
Good evening. I just wanted to, I'm going to keep this report brief because we have so many things to do this evening. I think it's important for everyone to know that we will be discussing options this evening that would require a two-thirds vote of the community should they be adopted by the district. I did a lot of legal research on the Articles of Agreement, and the Articles of Agreement state that there will be an elementary school in both communities. However, because we are a school district that's comprised of two or more towns, the law states that that would be either a kindergarten to sixth grade or kindergarten to eighth grade school in those communities. So if we should choose in the future, over the next few months, to adopt a model that would require reorganization of any of our elementary instruction, we would need to get a two-thirds vote to change the Articles of Agreement prior to adopting that model. And other than that, I'll leave it at that for tonight. This, it's obviously been very exciting and busy, and we've really had a great couple of weeks. I've had a lot of great conversations with parents, some great emails from folks, and I really appreciate everyone reaching out directly to me to get the facts instead of turning to Facebook to kind of have conversations about what they think the facts are. Because oftentimes, the facts are not what, you know, it's kind of like the telephone conversation where you tell a student at the beginning of the class one thing, and by the time they share it with everyone and it gets around the room, it's completely different. So going right to the source and getting facts is really helpful. So please reach out to me. I'm happy to give you whatever facts I can share. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, committee reports. Pam, I think you went first.
Policy met this evening, and we'll be looking at policies you'll see tonight. And our next meeting is October 3rd at 4:45.
Finance, Jim.
Finance committee met on September 12th. Tammy Mahoney, Taryn Leidl, Michelle Crotto, and I was, were present. I attended by teleconference. The finance committee reviewed the July 1st through August 31st budget reports. Over the 60-day period, the district spent $4,361,721. That includes a debt service payment on the bond for high school construction of $1,022,193. The next highest cost for salaries, benefits, including health and dental, and information technology. We also reviewed budget adjustments to allocate money for expenses in areas where surpluses to accounts needed additional, transferring surpluses to accounts that needed additional funding. The total of these adjustments was $106,548. The highest adjustment was $83,548 between special ed funds. Special ed funding is especially hard to predict because just one IEP or an out-of-district placement can substantially alter costs. There was also an adjustment for information systems to books. These adjustments are not increases to the budget. They're real allocations reflecting changes of funding needed within existing accounts. We reviewed a letter from the school district auditors notifying the district that the New Hampshire Department of Education has completed their fiscal year 2017 audit of the district's expenditures and federal awards. The DEOE found no issues of concern. That's their wording. We also reviewed a list of obsolete shop equipment to be disposed of by auction through the state of New Hampshire Surplus Auction, and the following items are examples: wood planer, milling machine, metal lathe, arc welder. Lastly, we were notified the district's electricity broker has negotiated discounted rate of 7.17 cents per kilowatt hour for 36 months, starting November of 2019. The previous rate was 7.3 cents a minute per kilowatt hour. That's it.
Karen, I believe you have a motion?
For which thing?
I thought, I thought when I checked.
Oh, we on personnel now?
Yeah.
So personnel pursuant to the last board meeting. The superintendent evaluation is ready to go. There weren't, there was only a minor change from the last meeting. It was placed in your board folder this week. So do we want to do a motion now to approve it, or do you want to wait until the policies are repealed and then approve it?
I think we should move to the policies.
Okay, then that's fine. Nothing more.
Cory, I didn't get a chance to talk to you before. Anything on SST? Adam? Anyway, I thought you were over there. Adam, sorry.
No worries. So.
Student Council report.
Student Council's been meeting every third day, A and D days in the schedule. We did have some volunteers for Reach the Beach on Saturday, September 15th. The Student Council decided our theme days for this week for Homecoming Week. Monday was Career Day. Tuesday was Squad/Twin Day. Today was Athletes vs. Mathletes. Tomorrow will be our class themes, and Friday will be our class colors. Prepping for the pep rally, we have equipment managers to set up all the games and all the sports during the pep rally. Ella Carter and Sam Gerosi, sorry if I butchered that last name. We've seen some great school spirit this past week. A lot of kids are getting dressed up, getting into it, getting excited for Friday and Saturday. And we, as a Student Council, would like to invite the board and the public to Homecoming on Saturday, September 20th. What's our, 20?
This Saturday?
This Saturday. 22nd? The parade will start at 8:00 AM, followed by skits and dances. We hope to see y'all there.
Thank you. Old business. School board goes.
Okay. I think we're working on getting the slides up here, but I'm going to stand over here so I can see the slides. Thank you. It's kind of hot tonight. I can whisper, and you would all hear me. Just waiting for the... I think I shared it with you, Michelle. Did they have you?
They did, but I think they need to come down and connect. It's connected to your computer, not hers.
They just.
I've got it up on my screen. I'm just waiting for it to be connected, so it'll project.
Yeah, no problem. So I thought I would walk us through some of the information that I shared in my superintendent's report last year after the conclusion of my entry plan and all of those meetings, and also talk to you about some of the things that we're working on as a district. And then the board will need to decide what their goals will be for this year. All right, great. I can see it, too. That's nice. All right, great. So last year, the school board adopted a definition of student success. It's a very important document that really should drive all of our decisions as a community as we go through this process of figuring out what it is that we are going to do with regard to our resources as a district. The, I'll just quickly read some of these slides, which I don't typically do. Michelle, could you go to presentation mode so I can see a little better? Sorry, I just got new glasses, so I'm still kind of like, you know, looking at the... Yay, thank you. So the definition of student success, career and college readiness, was a very intense year-long effort by many, many people. Our Excellence and Student Achievement Committee and administration staff and community all had input into this definition. So this document describes the attributes and skills that students will possess and demonstrate upon completion of a pre-K-12 education in the Sanborn Regional School District. Students who possess and demonstrate these attributes and skills are determined to be career and college ready. Graduates of the Sanborn Regional School District exhibit the knowledge, skills, and wayfinding abilities essential for independent lifelong learning and the achievement of personal, career, and post-secondary goals. These personal, career, and post-secondary goals are identified in an actionable plan. We worked really hard to make sure that whatever it is that we are doing... I'll take that if it works. Thanks, Phyllis. To make sure that what we're doing with students has clear and concise steps. That's okay. Is that ready to go? That's awesome. Thank you. Much easier than telling Michelle when I'm ready to switch. Thank you. All right, so these steps, obviously, this is the starting point.
Yes, no?
You can go to the next one, Michelle. All right, so demonstration of competency in the Sanborn Regional School District's work and study practices, collaboration, communication, creativity, and self-direction. So you can see at the top, and I'll put all this on the web for folks who are watching on TV. Graduates will demonstrate evidence toward competency in the following focus areas. The second one is math skills for everyday life through the completion of at least three math courses and one math experience in high school. The ability to write effectively is evidenced by performance on district writing competencies. Demonstration of the ability to use technology for continuous learning and to manage life responsibilities. I think we all know that the kids are way better at that than we are already, but it's important to keep an eye on it because it changes every day. That was kind of supposed to be a little bit of a joke. So the demonstration of the ability to use technology for continuous learning... Oh, I read that one, sorry. Appreciation for the fine arts through the completion of at least one fine arts high school course or its equivalent. I struggled with that one because I wanted it to be two or three, but I settled for one. As you all know, the fine arts are very important to me. Exhibition of positive lifestyle choices that support and promote physical, mental, and social well-being. I'll take the next slide, please. Completion of a New Hampshire, oh, graduates will demonstrate success in two or more of the following indicators. The indicators may be duplicated. This does mirror what the state sent for the indicators that they would use for success under the new federal funding laws called ESO. Completion of a New Hampshire Scholars Program of Study. Standard science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM or arts. A grade of basic proficient or veteran at dual enrollment high school/collage course. Collastic aptitude test scores meeting or exceeding the college and career ready benchmark. The time this was written, it was 480 and 530 in math. 480 in reading and writing and 530 in math. We'll have to update that. The American College Testing ACT scores meeting or exceeding the college and career ready benchmark, currently 18 in English, 22 in Mathematics, 22 in Reading, and 23 in Science, a score of 3, 4, or 5 on an AP exam, Advanced Placement Exam. Have the next slide, please, Michelle? Take the next slide.
You're there.
Wait, there should be more slides.
Yeah, that's the one that...
Oh.
I did advance to the next slide unless this is...
Okay, can you go back one? I'm sorry. Yes, go to the next one, please. Thank you. Earning a career in technical education, CTE Industry Recognized Credential. Completion of a New Hampshire Career Pathway Program of Study, which includes academic coursework, post-secondary career planning, and work-based internship, extending learning, extended learning opportunity, or our acronym for that is ELO. Scoring at least Level 3 on components of the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, ASVAB, that comprise the Armed Forces Qualifying Test, the AFQT, or acceptance into an accredited post-secondary institution, which includes four-year college, two-year college, or career technical school, or acceptance into an apprenticeship reviewed and validated by the superintendent of schools. Thank you. The definition of student success says that graduates will complete an approved menu of community-based learning experiences from pre-K-12 that may include but are not limited to personal interest learning activities, community service, or service learning projects, and civic engagement opportunities. All students will complete a menu, pre-K-12, of defensive learning activities, a series of linked student exhibitions culminating in a personalized Grade 12 capstone exhibition. There'll be a lot more information about that last one coming out during the year this year. So during my entry plan, I talked a lot about the needs, so I wanted to bring us back to those needs before we set goals and have the evening happen. We needed to craft a definition of student success and build a plan to support that vision. So we definitely crafted the definition of student success, as I just read to you, and the next step is to plan to support that vision. We, I recommended highly that we continue to support the analysis of data, goal setting, and collaboration by continuing to support the work of professional learning communities, which is small group meetings for teachers so that they can analyze data and make informed decisions about instruction. Increase the number of intervention staff, paras, and teachers, and focus the intervention through the analysis of data and best practices in instruction. Our district is woefully understaffed in this area. It's a main cause of the issues that we're having with academics. Essentially, students are in the regular education setting, or they're receiving support in special education. There's no intervention prior to special education. I'll be talking about that more this evening. We need to provide significant professional development that supports curriculum alignment, differentiation of instruction, and student ownership of their work. The school board did support money for professional development last year, and I'm happy to report that that has been very, very helpful this year. We have had a number of incredible trainings go on that I'll talk about at a future update. Carefully budget through the analysis of current staff configuration of the district facilities use and reallocation of resources based on enrollment and needs. Communicate the expectations to parents and the community in a uniform and timely manner. That's a really fancy way of saying y'all need to get the same information at the same time regardless of what grade your child is in. And increase the rigor across the K-12 system. We also need to increase the number of extracurricular offerings. If students are in school engaged, they're not out on the streets doing other things. Reach out to the community, particularly the senior citizens, and increase the volunteer base K to A to mirror the hundreds of people that are already working with the high school. We are very resource-rich. We have wonderful senior citizens that live in our community, parents, aunts, uncles, and guardians, and we'd like them to come to our schools and spend time reading and doing math with our children. So I made some recommended goals because my job as the superintendent is to help the board to set goals and to achieve those goals. The NASDAQ study is the beginning of addressing our need to carefully budget through the analysis of current staff configuration of the district facilities use and reallocation of resources based on enrollment needs. The essential question for this work is how will the physical layout of our district impact our resources and programming? And the definition of student success. We need to begin the progress of measuring outcomes, and this includes clarifying and revising the strategic plan, which in my mind would also include the capital plan. Recommended goal number two is that we need to begin the process of measuring outcomes and planning interventions for students that are not meeting expectations. This work includes clarifying and revising the strategic plan, and this is linked to careful budgeting and resource allocation and curriculum materials. We need to finish our policy review. We have the majority of the policy recommendations back from the New Hampshire School Board Association, and if Will ever sees this on TV, thank you, Will. Phillips, the lawyer at NHSBA, has been wonderful. We spent seven hours last Friday, seven of us, reviewing 180-some-odd policies against Attorney Phillips' recommendations, and I have to say, there was a lot of work to do. We spent another two and a half hours today working on it, and you'll be seeing a lot of policies come to the school board over the next three months. So we are processing those, and I think it's important to continue that work this year. So the three areas that I would, oh, we can go to that one after. The three areas that I would just encourage the board to consider tonight are facilities, instruction, particularly resources for students who have significant academic needs, and continuing the policy review. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any discussion on board goals?
Well, I won't say the superintendent has read our minds. He's just talked to us a lot. And I definitely support the list of goals, especially when it comes to measuring outcomes and planning for interventions. For EISA, we've been looking at our next step as embedding specific academic outcomes trends in the five-year plan and identifying outcomes targets, improvements targets. We want to see where we're going and what kinds of targets we can meet with our resources and with our programs. I know we're still working on improving professional development, for example, so we need to look at the arc and see how much progress we can make over two to five years. Hopefully, a lot, and the resources will help there. I also support the goal of revising our policy manual. We finally have received most of the New Hampshire School Board Association recommendations and notes concerning our manual, and we still are waiting for a couple of the sections, but we have most of them now. And this year, we should be able to complete the review and upgrade our manual within one year and not two. So, thank you.
Jim.
Yeah, I have three goals. Some of them mirror pretty close with the superintendent suggested. Some of them are a little bit more detailed. With regard to facilities, I think we need to evaluate and include the results of the NASDAQ National School Development Council study in our budgeting and facilities goals. As far as instruction goes, I have a three-part goal here. Set measures to evaluate where the district performance is with regard to meeting academic goals as per the new definition of student success. B is, at least two times a year, host an administration report on the progress of achieving these measures. And C, compare academic performance year to year and improve Sanborn's results in relation to state of New Hampshire reported averages. The goal is to continually evaluate success of the curriculum with regard to our students demonstrating mastery of academic content. A comparison against statewide performance will help us measure this. And three is budget. To the extent possible, prepare the 2019 through 2020 proposed operating budget with sufficient savings that when combined with the professional and staff support increases, the total proposed budget does not exceed a combined total cost increase of more than 0.5%. This current year, we've started to make good progress in this area to reach the point of sustainable funding within the means of the community's ability to pay. We need to try very hard to continue to equalize our higher costs per student and tax rates for the lower costs of neighboring towns.
Further comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Oops, I'm sorry. I missed someone.
Just one more addition for the budget. The Budget Committee is going to be starting its deliberations on October 11th, 2018 PM. The public is very welcome to come and enjoy, and join us with this. Again, that's October 11th, 2018, at 7 o'clock in the library right here in this building. Looking forward to seeing you. Thank you very much.
I just want to make sure. Hey, Cory?
I guess my question is... Should we stop that? Tess, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay. You guys can hear me? I guess my question is, how many of these goals, if you read them back, are aligned directly to the success of Sanborn as defined from my fellow board members? I agree that we have to be fiduciary agents, but at the exact same time, how many of these goals that I just heard described are focusing on student outcomes and focusing on something that's measurable? So there's two questions there. How do, if we read the definition of success to Sanborn, about, of Sanborn, and we read each one of those goals, how do they all correlate back to our stakeholders and the kids? I really want to hear that answer, and I'd love someone else to, like, tell me how and why, and really get into like a root cause analysis, asking why.
I think he's asking the board. Well, I'm making the assumption that the superintendent, we haven't talked about outcomes yet because we just started on the goals, but we will be looking, I'm guessing, April, May, as what the goals are now and whether we attain those goals. So to answer your question, because we just set the goals now, I haven't proceeded that far down the road. But I'm making the assumption that come March, we're going to have some heavy discussions as to whether we met these goals, whether the goals are realistic. We think they are now, but it could be we're going to go down the road and find out they weren't realistic, and then would modify goals in the future. So I don't think we can answer your question now because we haven't, I mean, we're working towards them, but we haven't digested them and started attaining them yet.
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I appreciate the superintendent putting this information together. It's very detailed, and Mr. Baker's additions, I thought, were good. Speaking for the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee, I feel that these will help provide us with a lot of good guidance for us, the work that we want to do in our committee this year, particularly around the strategic plan and the process of measuring outcomes, and I liked Mr. Baker's detailed statements actually quite a lot. Like to see those, I'd like to see those in more detail. So I would support these goals. Thank you.
Karen?
So what I just heard you say is that we're, at this point, looking to adopt goals tonight that we will then look, reflect on in March to see if we have met the goals.
Well, I'm guessing towards the end of the year, and this is where I think the Excellence and Education Committee is going to have a lot of work, you know?
But I just want to clarify. We are adopting goals very late, and then some of us may or may not be leaving at the end of this term. So we really need to look at a measurable goal for the school board that we can figure out whether or not we met it in March and then make theoretically how this is supposed to work. to work, for people who don't know, is when the new sitting board comes in, they are supposed to make goals. We attempted this process when I came on, but we couldn't make a set of goals. We tried because everyone had long lists of what they wanted to do, and there wasn't a tremendous spirit of compromise. I'm happy to say, I think we've grown as a board since then. So what I would propose, if we are actually looking to make measurable goals that we can report out on while we are still the sitting board here and before the changing of the guard, is that we pick two that we can actually possibly achieve, and the only two that I see on here that we can actually possibly achieve are a comprehensive policy review, because that's underway, and I think we should have...I think the only other one is, looking towards tonight, is a roadmap for best use of resources to include both facilities and allocation for intervention, because that directly influences student outcomes, which goes to Cory's point, and Jim's point, and Tammy's point of getting to the definition of student success. I think realistically, it is almost October. So if we're looking to say, how did we do by March? To me, the only two things that are even possible to see, how did we do by March, that we actually have some...I can't think of the word, but basically, that we actually can possibly influence are figuring out the facility situation and making sure that our policies, hopefully by next summer, are all up to snuff and legally up to date, which is something I know that, you know, the board has been working on continuously. So what I would propose is that we have those be our two goals, and then in March, look at how those went, and then decide, do we add something else? Do we move forward with something further? But you have to be realistic, setting goals for a few months when some people are going to be coming or going. There's a big difference between things that I would like to do and things that are actually achievable goals.
Just to give a little history on goals, Dr. Brown is the chairman of the Policy Committee. How many...I say we're behind. For some reason...
Over 200.
There was a little bit of a lax in previous years about looking at the policies, and since Dr. Brown took over, this is your second year as chair, we've got 200-plus policies to look at.
Well, you can't predict regulatory changes. It's not...
Right, right, but I mean, right now, I believe Department of Ed has told us in looking at them...
But we have a lot of revisions, yes, correct.
Yeah, a lot.
Right. So that's a doable goal for this year, but outcomes, measurable outcomes, will take two years because we have SAT scores, but we do not have the Armed Forces Test trends, which is another part of our college and career readiness framework, which lists these broad educational outcomes defining success. So since we've included additional measures of success, we need to start gathering that data, look at the trend, and then make...decide on what kinds of targets we can meet. So that's going to take time, and we're giving curriculum leadership time to gather that information. So that's part of success. That's part of meeting our goals.
That's why I came up with probably March, April, by the time we get all that together.
The student success indicators is a two-year goal, not a one-year goal.
Any other comment? Yep, oops, here we go.
I think it would be disappointing if we don't have a goal that includes something, you know, to do with instruction. I hate to see that we set two goals, the facilities and...
Well, I guess I misinterpreted. Perhaps I misinterpreted what Cory said. I thought Cory was asking for a way to quantify the goals, not set...yeah, you're absolutely right. We should pick one or two to absolutely those are the ones, but I thought his question was, how would we quantify them once we, in the next couple of weeks, come out with, these are definitive goals we're absolutely going to want to meet? So I agree with you, and I agree with Cory, I guess is what I'm saying.
Jim?
We've been kicking these goals around for many months. At the last meeting, we decided we were going to have goals in four areas: policy, facilities, instruction, and budget. And granted, we've had a very full plate over the past several months, but I'd like to set the bar a little higher than two goals. We may not reach them, but there's no reason we can't set the goals, and to whatever extent we come up short, then we try to do better. I just think we owe that to the community. We've got a lot we've accomplished, we've got a lot more to do, and I don't see any reason to hang back.
Well, you just gave us a homework assignment.
Yeah. The superintendent gave us an outline for many measurable areas when he talked about what graduates will demonstrate. We can measure the success of that as part of the academic progress.
Yes, we...can I?
I was just going to say, fellas, could you put goals on the next agenda, and your homework assignment, boys and girls, not even upstairs in my classroom, is to come up with what you feel are appropriate goals. I'm not going to give you a number, all right? And that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
So can I interject? We already did this merry-go-round a year and a half ago, to be blunt. I mean, when I got on the board, everyone, it was, let's all come with our goals. Everyone had 3,000 goals, and there's a real confusion. So I hear what Tammy is saying with...but I wasn't saying just a facilities goal. The reallocation of resources pursuant to the NASDAQ study that the whole audience here tonight is here to comment on and think about, the whole point of that is figuring out how to reallocate resources so that they can directly benefit student success at our schools. So it's not a facilities versus academic school. The other thing is, I think, people are very fuzzy on what a goal is. A goal should be measurable and achievable. It is not a...
Subjective?
It has to be measurable and achievable. We are a sitting board until March, so, you know, I'm not aiming low having two goals. I'm trying to have two goals that we might actually be able to report out on in a way that the public can actually see what has happened or has not happened. So I, for one, personally, am ready to make a motion to adopt at least two goals tonight because I don't think waiting another board meeting and have everyone bring their list, and now we're back to 18 months ago, and now we're going to sit through more meetings. I just think that we need to get on with it. The public said repeatedly, they want the board to set goals. We are here. Let's set some goals. Let's figure it out. So I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, before you make the motion, could I suggest that we...because we've got now about a half hour, because that's going to involve quite a discussion, in my opinion.
Fifteen minutes.
Pardon?
Fifteen minutes.
We have fifteen minutes.
That's fine, if that's what you want. All I'm saying is, if we put it on the next agenda, we could have an hour. I mean, it doesn't mean we still can't discuss it next week, but on the next meeting. I'm just saying, would it...my question is, is it better to come up with two tonight, which is fine, or is it better to just put everything together for the next agenda item? What do you people feel? I just throw it out there, whatever you want.
Let's do two tonight and keep working on it.
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, that's all.
Okay.
It's your meeting, I have no problem with that.
All right, so I'm going to move to set two goals tonight.
All right.
Okay. Goal number one, review the information, word it however you want, review the information about the NASDAQ study, and come up with a recommendation for best utilizing Sanborn resources to support student success. So that's the first one. Do you want to do them separately?
We'll vote on each one.
All right, so that's my motion.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, Jim. Discussion? All in favor?
Is this a two-year?
I'm sorry.
Two-year goal?
No.
No, no, not NASDAQ.
No. Like, a few-months goal, get on with it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think NASDAQ can go out two years, but I wouldn't even put a time on it, all right? But I think two months is appropriate, but let's not put a time, because now we're wiring ourselves into a position, I don't know if we're going to want to later on. We'll end up, because of the time, making decisions that maybe wouldn't necessarily be the right decision, all right? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Cory said aye.
All right, second motion. Goal number two, comprehensive policy review and updating so that we are at least meeting the standards of New Hampshire law.
Can I have a second?
Second.
You want to talk about...you're the policy guru, so I don't know if you have anything to say about that, because you know what's on the plate.
I support the goal, and...
You just gave yourself a lot of work.
Trust me, I'm doing the work. It was a joke, Pam. Dr. Brown has done an incredible job.
And about his renewal on his...
I was just kidding. We had to lighten it up a little bit, it's getting a little too...
Yeah, it's getting a little serious.
All right.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Cory had his hand up. Taryn made the motion.
Chair brought up, can I?
Everybody.
Sure. I do think it would be reasonable for the board to set a goal this evening around instruction because I would like to move forward, and this would...I'm also kind of setting the stage for my own goal, which is that I really want to take a look at all of our student data around the definition of student success and get a baseline of where we're at right now. So if someone would be willing to make a motion...
How would you word that motion, sir?
I've got a motion for you.
You got it? Okay.
Set measures to evaluate where the district performance is in regard to meeting academic goals as per the new definition of student success.
Second.
Taryn seconded. Jim made the motion. Discussion?
I'd like to amend that.
Oh, okay.
And map outcomes goals into resource allocations.
Can you read that back?
We're going to read it back in a second. As soon as...there's a heck of an echo up here, I don't know how it is down there.
Map goals into program resource allocations.
Math, M-A-T-H?
No, math.
No, math.
Map, M-A-P. I wonder if it was an echo.
There you go.
So what Dr. Brown is saying, I think, and please tell me if I'm wrong, Dr. Brown is saying that there's a correlation to the definition of student success and where kids are at, and then what are we going to do about it, which then ties into the resources, which ties into the facilities, which also is started with policy. This is all one web, right? These things are all related. So I would agree with the amendment from a leadership perspective as the administration that I can't stress enough that there are some little boys and girls that need our help, and I'm going to do what it takes to help them, right? And I've met them, and now it's becoming a heart-level work, not just cerebral work about things that need to happen. So I really appreciate that, thank you.
Have you got them? Because we're going to first vote on the amendment.
I just want clarification. Set measures to evaluate...Jim said something differently than Pam, so set measures to evaluate...
You want me to read it again? Well, it's, "Set measures to evaluate where the district performance is with regard to meeting academic goals as per the new definition of student success." Phillips, I gave you a copy of it.
And then Pam amended to say, "And allocation of resources based on those needs."
That's fine, yeah.
Did I get it right? I mean, I'm trying to...
And, yes, and allocate resources based on those needs, and of course, adjust resources based on the outcomes, so...
Yeah, right.
Okay, Pete? We're still working on that one.
Bun? Yeah, no, I just want to make sure everybody's talked, who wants to talk. Okay, so first vote's going to be on the amendment, okay? All in favor? That's unanimous. Cory's got his hand up. Okay, any further discussion on the motion with the amendment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Cory's got his hand up, so we'll all sit on that.
Mr. Chairman?
This is easy. Pardon?
Are we ready to move on?
Unless somebody has something on their old business?
I've got...we know, all know we have to do a budget this year. I'd like to make a budget goal. We have to do a budget, we should have a budget goal.
We can do that now, we can...I mean, this is what I was a bit concerned about, but if, you know, whatever you want to do, Jim, I mean, it's a meeting.
Yeah, this is my proposed motion.
Okay.
"To the extent possible, prepare the 2019 through '20 proposed operating budget with sufficient savings that when combined with the professional and staff support increases, the total proposed budget does not exceed a combined total cost increase of more than .5%." This current year, and then the reasoning is, this current year, we've started to make good progress in this area, and to reach the point of sustainability within the means of the community's ability to pay, we just have to try very hard to continue to equalize these cost areas. We're still paying substantially more per student and higher tax rates than neighboring towns. So this is, with the efficiencies that we have identified in the NASDAQ study and other areas, this is a goal that we should be able to achieve.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, now, I just need clarification on this under the discussion. You said 25%?
No, .5%.
.5%?
Right.
Now, you realize this is a goal, it is not necessarily something we would necessarily attain, we're not locked into it.
To the extent possible.
I will tell you that I cannot agree to .5% given the cost of living is a minimum 2%. And I don't...I mean, it is a goal, so technically, it's smoke because it's only a goal, it's not something that we're locked into, but I don't want people thinking, and I don't, you know, that, oh, we're locked into .5%. I think that is not realistic, so I can't support that. Somebody else can say what they want. Taryn?
So I'll be a little more broader than you were, Pete. Not only...I'm not going to comment on whether that's realistic or not, that's opinion. What I will say is, as a school board member and an educator, I will not support any board goal that is based on an arbitrary amount being allocated to the budget when the budget should be set based on student academic needs. So if the budget needs to go up based on allocating resources for student needs, or whether the budget needs to go down allocating resources for student needs, that's where the school board's role comes in, so I will absolutely not support that as a goal.
Cory?
I 100% agree with you, Taryn, thank you for saying that. This is a task of the organization. This has to happen in order to succeed, in order to meet the mission and vision of the organization. If the budget goes up, it goes up. If it goes down, it goes down. We have fiduciary responsibility. The superintendent has been highly responsible in his tasks and his processes thus far. As you've indicated, you want to continue that trend, Mr. Baker. If he doesn't continue that trend, that's an evaluation discussion. So this is not a goal, this is a realistic thing that will occur regardless, and the voting body will take care of that. Do your job, give us and provide the right information for us when we need to make those decisions, superintendent, when you bring presented budget.
Thank you. Before I recognize you, Jim, anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Given our comparative cost per pupil relative to other districts, I consider this a reasonable goal.
Larry? Tammy, you're the only one that hasn't spoken. Nope. You don't have to, I'm not putting it on you, but...
I don't think it's a bad idea for us to articulate a goal for the community to understand that we are looking at being as fiscally responsible as possible. As others have noted, it's a goal, it's not set in stone, but it is something to work toward.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, this is about balance again. We've had many years of teachers' contracts fail. We pay our teachers lower than surrounding districts, but our total operating budget is substantially higher. So we're looking at fairness here. We're going to keep asking taxpayers to pay more than surrounding communities and a higher cost per student? We've got to look at where the imbalances are here, and we've got to figure that out. Last year, we passed a teacher's contract...or two years ago, we passed a teacher's contract which increased the teacher's salaries by $500,000. That carried over for another $500,000 years this year, plus that contract had another $600,000 increases in the second year. So the contracts went up a million and a half, but because we were able to find savings in the operating budget, the total increase was only .6%. When I went to the polls, it passed. We can talk about needs, and we can talk about passing all kinds of budgets, but the bottom line is, the voters have to pass it. So to be responsible, we have to look at where we can save money. I think point five percent will allow us, overall, will allow us to fund a teacher's contract, and by reductions in the operating budget in other areas, whether it's through NASDAQ consolidations or however we do it, we'll be able to get that, the operating budget and the teacher's contract passed. Otherwise, that's gonna be a problem. It all, it has been in the past, and I, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be in the future.
I move the motion.
Move the motion. Okay. All in favor, point five percent raising hands? Three. Opposed?
Aye.
Four. Motion does not carry. You want the people voted for and against? Do you have the names?
Can we, can we pause the agenda?
Well, I was gonna have the first public comment. We've got five minutes. Because we have two public comments, and we have quite a bit, so if we can do the public comment and then go into it. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who are not usually here, there are two public comments. But I'd like to have one now, in case anybody wants to talk about what we've already discussed, and after that, we will go into, um, the workshop. So if there is a microphone on that podium and a microphone on that podium, they're just like these. You don't have to hold them up to your mouth, alright? They should pick up what you're saying. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, fine. If not, okay, by all means, sir. Would you please identify yourselves so Phyllis can write it down in the town you're from?
Yes, James McCarthy from Newton, Kenwood Ave. I come from the manufacturing industry, and I would like to directly address your, um, one point five year span for your specific measurable, actionable, relevant, um, time-bound goals. That is not acceptable. Your two-month plan is more acceptable, but that's even stretching it because you folks need to realize you also have holidays coming into effect. You need to figure out what you're gonna do trying to get this stuff out to the public, who's also gonna be involved in holidays. And as you can see, you're not addressing many people. Now, you have this NASDAQ report that you're dealing with, and you have, I forget what the other, um, report is that you're supposedly implementing already for the current situation that you have with your buildings and replacing windows and doors and roofs. Where is your smart action on that? And how are you progressing with that already set agenda? You guys need to measure yourselves on that prior to going forward with this NASDAQ report and thinking you're gonna get success with that plus the, um, student success. You gotta, you gotta really look at what you already got going on and see where you're coming up short.
For those who maybe do not know, three minutes is the time allotted, and the board does not usually respond because this is comments. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Wait, could I, could I, I do want to say one thing. We're gonna talk about...
After I just said that?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not addressing him. I'm trying to help you all before people come up and speak. We have two hours allotted to talking about this issue of the NASDAQ study. I have another slide to show you which addresses some of the gentleman who just spoke's concerns. Um, I just want people to be aware that we could spend an hour on public comment right now, but we've got a facilitator here to run a program. I just want to help, help people to understand that you're going to be able to talk this evening almost all night. That's the purpose of this, this workshop is time for the board to hear from the community. So I just want everyone to understand that. Before we start jumping into comments or concerns about the NASDAQ study, that is the purpose of this whole meeting. I, I think we should keep it...
What we just passed and it has to stay with what was on the agenda, and he did talk about that.
But what's, what's tricky is that the NASDAQ study is something that was discussed during the goal setting. But we, we're gonna be doing this. This is not gonna happen in five weeks. I mean, we're going to be working on this all year, and there are going to be many opportunities. I do encourage folks to, to keep comments reasonable right now so that we can move forward with the presentation. There'll be another opportunity to speak after and during the presentation.
Good evening. Mary Seer from Kingston. Uh, I just want to make an observation and a comment. In years past, for the past ten to twelve years, the one objective of our district has been to become a top ten percent school in the state. We failed miserably. So to put forth three goals tonight is fa- fabulous. Thank you. Um, I, I look forward to you adding some measurable outcomes to those, and you should keep in mind that it's a living, breathing document, or it should be. And as priorities changes and needs change, you should amend your goals and objectives accordingly. Thank you.
Further public comment? Okay, Todd here? Oh, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Speak by all means.
Hi.
How you doing?
Gwen McCarthy from Newton, Kenwood Drive. Um, last meeting, I spoke a little bit about how I felt that the board was putting the cart before the horse, and I feel that way still as I went back and tried to educate myself more on what's been going on. And something that has struck me and that has bothered me even before, you know, the last few weeks was there's a lot of talk about setting goals and investigating outcomes and measuring performance and seeing what's gonna help. But I can't help but wonder why every time the board composition changes or the superintendent changes, why you go back to recreating the wheel? And that's not with any disrespect to anyone sitting here now who wasn't before, but you know, I found this. There's, was created with every school board member and the then superintendent and members of the community, a Sanborn Regional School District Strategic Plan. That was supposed to go from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one to two thousand eighteen. There's a lot of this in, of things in here that just with my limited experience, I know haven't been addressed. Then we have the Capital Improvement Plan also issued, and it was supposed to be in effect from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. Things in here include replacing doors, replacing windows, buying books, fixing roofs. How are you doing with this? Because from what I've seen, not very good. Instead, you've kind of thrown this out the window and you've moved to the NASDAQ options. And I've heard a lot of justification for that based on Newton pays so much more in taxes. Our tax rate is ridiculous. That comes up all the time. Our cost per pupil is outrageous. How are we spending this much money and we're not having the outcomes we want? And a lot of that is misrepresentation at best, if not outright being deceptive. Because I went and I looked up the figures from the state of New Hampshire, and you guys can't see this, but it has every district and every town and their tax rates and their cost per pupil spending, and guess what? I did a really simple eyeball because I'm a working mom with three kids, don't have a whole lot of time to do this. But I just took a blue highlighter and I put a plus mark next to every town, city, or district that spends more than we do in Sanborn. And there's a lot of check marks. So you're not being pulled the truth by some members on this board.
Ma'am.
And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other couple of comments? Chris, is Todd here?
Yes, Todd is here.
Todd, come on down. You're the next contestant of The Price is Right.
So I'll, I'll kick this off.
And I, I would like to say a couple of things, if I may. First, this is the school board, so listen to you. You may not get any comment from any school board members. We're listening to you. Alright? There are, I'm gonna say nine options because one of them is, sometimes a decision is no decision. Uh, we don't know where we're going. The NASDAQ was put together because we know, based on what they have told us, population in the next five years going down about fourteen percent, and over the next ten years, twenty-five percent. We commissioned NASDAQ about ten years ago, and I believe they were off two students in ten years. This is a very passionate subject. I understand that. There's nothing wrong with passion. But you know, there's twenty-eight flavors at Baskin and Robson. Does you like chocolate doesn't mean the person who likes vanilla is wrong. Conversely, if you like vanilla, the chocolate person isn't wrong. Alright? Everybody's entitled their own wishes and what they particularly think is best for them. Please keep that in mind. There are gonna be options. I would like it to be polite and courteous. Todd DeMitchell is gonna be facilitating this. He happens to be a professional. Comes from the University of New Hampshire. We'll be talking about him in a few minutes. So, please understand, these are your neighbors. These are your friends, and we would like it to be information from you to us. So with that, Superintendent, if you want to introduce Todd?
I do, uh, I, I just wanted to kind of frame things a little bit here because this is a very difficult conversation, and I've spent the better part of the last year of my life listening to people, their concerns and perspective here. And I've really grown to, to truly care for this community and the children and the families, and so I put a lot of thought into what to say tonight, and this is my message about this whole situation. We have a problem. Our students are not performing at the level that they could be, regardless of whether or not we consider state tests to be important or not. My point is that I want every child who leaves here to be able to read and write and do computation and have hope for a wonderful future. So I have some concerns about that. We have wonderful teachers. They work really hard, and they care about your kids, and you all know them, right? I mean, you, you, some of them are right here. And so what I wanted to say about that is that what we have in our district right now, our students are, are working on with their teachers, and then if they don't get the help that they need, they basically only have special education as an option. We need intervention for kids before special education. And I want to be clear that this is not a small item. Most districts, our elementary schools have two paraprofessionals from Title I money, which is grant money, in each elementary school, not teachers, paraprofessionals, one for math and one for reading. When I ran a pre-K two elementary school, I had ten in one school for three hundred students and two full-time teachers. So I'm gonna show you this next slide, and it's gonna cause a little bit of hubbub, but I need to rip the Band-Aid off because I'm the leader, so I'm gonna do it right now. We need six point three million dollars. I'm gonna tell you why. Because you're right, the Capital Improvement Plan was unreasonable.
I didn't say that.
No, no, you're right, but it is. It's two, three point five million dollars for the middle school is what it would take to fix it. I looked it all up today. I read every figure. Three point five million. If folks want to fix the middle school, I am all in. But I'm telling you that in order to do that, the district needs funding for intervention for students to the tune of one point five million. We haven't been growing this for twenty years. That means that we need two teachers at each school, one for math and one for reading, and four paraprofessionals because kids who need to learn skills need help. The district needs to establish emergency funds for immediate unplanned needs such as the Swayze Gym this spring. We don't have that. We don't have money in accounts to cover when a student moves in for special education and they need a hundred and fifty thousand dollar out-of-district placement. We have no choice. That doesn't just come out of the air. It comes out of the budget. It comes away from kids. We have no reserve money when kindergarten bubbles over like it almost did this summer to hire an extra teacher. The Bakey School was this close to needing a third teacher at the end of August, a fourth teacher, I'm sorry. Right? I want you to hear that. I want you to hear that, that, that doesn't mean that you'd spend that million dollars. The process would be that I, as the superintendent, for anything that isn't special education, we can't control. We have to pay it. But regular education expenses and facilities, if there is a need, because we do have significant facility needs, then I would come to the board and say, this is the need. Will you approve an expense of one of these emergency funds? If we don't spend them, they just carry over. We don't have that. I'm running a thirty-five million dollar organization with no bumper. It's serious. We need more money for professional development. I put, I put a hundred thousand in the budget last year. I was granted seventy-five thousand in its work and miracles. Teachers need to have professional development. I need to be able to fund all the children, teachers who want to learn how to do Orton Gillingham to help kids who can't read. I need to be able to fund teachers having the best training in the world from Columbia University, which we have been absolutely blessed to access this summer. It's not inexpensive because it's amazing. If my job is to improve the academic performance of our children, I cannot do it without intervention, professional development, and adequate facilities. I can't meet those goals. These are the things that I need to do my job. The district must consider the state of our facilities. The cap, this, this is, it's about money in the sense that everything costs money. Did you know that it costs almost a hundred thousand dollars to run a professional development day for a school district? When you include all the fuel, salaries, facilities, electricity, custodians? The presenters cost this much, but the per diem rate is close to eighty to a hundred thousand dollars depending on the day. Time is our most expensive commodity, and we need more for our kids. The district has to consider the facilities, and the Capital Improvement Plan just for the middle school outlines three point five million dollars over a four-year period. When I was hired, the board and I discussed this issue at length and agreed to suspend the current Capital Improvement Plan until the entire, because we had entirely new administration, except for our high school principal, two elementary assistant principals, our special ed director, and, uh, uh, our high school prin, did I say the high school prin? There were four people left out of eleven. We don't know if those, those plans are legit or if they're reasonable, so we have to audit those because now we're the, we're the people who are responsible for spending that money. I'm the kind of guy who, when we wanted to build two walls in the central office, it was gonna cost thirty-three thousand dollars, and I whittled it down to fourteen grand. When they asked us to fix the safety at Memorial School, they said two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I went over there and made it fifty thousand dollars just by talking to people. Okay, I'm not a spendthrift. These are really legitimate, serious problems. So if we choose to keep our current fig, configuration, which is totally fine, I'm gonna do what the community and the board directs me to do. Our administrators will do what we are directed to do. But if we keep our current middle school, we have to pay for this. It has original windows from nineteen seventy-seven. Original. Just that alone is a ginormous expense, and I'm okay with that. I want you all to hear that I'd love to have a standalone middle school, but we, we have a, 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 a very expensive, beautiful building that was built for eleven hundred students that currently seats six hundred and fifty. So we just have to ask ourselves, how are we gonna do this? And whatever the outcome is, I hope that everyone's civil. I hope that everyone's nice and they use I statements. I hope that everybody thinks about the big picture. Well, I know I'm an elementary principal. I had to say I statements. I'm sorry. I just realized I did that. Oh, my goodness. My kid would be rolling his eyes in the back right now in eighth grade like, oh, my God, Dad. Um, but I, I do just think it's really important to be careful here because if we don't come together, it's gonna tear us apart. Okay? So I hope you all have a great evening, and I'm really looking forward to having Todd talk to you all. Todd is a, a very well-respected facilitator from University of New Hampshire. His, his resume is so long, it was, what, seven pages, eight? I gave up. I, I just hired the guy. So I'm really excited to have him here, and I have a feeling he might be a part of this process more than just this evening. So thank you very much for your time. Everyone notices Pete's got little candies for me when I get stressed out.
Either one.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? But I haven't used the microphones?
No.
No?
There's, there's one on each side.
Or you can, you can use mine.
I have a few, I have a few structuring comments I'd like to make as the facilitator. First of all, thank you for coming to, attending this important community discussion on the NASDAQ research and options. A community's public schools are visible, symbolic, and important markers for the, for the community. It's representative of its values. The schools serve as gathering places. We can see where we are right now. Uh, in addition to being places of learning, it is a place where the community does gather and go. Consequently, decisions that impact the schools also impact the community. That wasn't applause, was it? I still have more to say. So, my name is, my name is Todd DeMitchell. I'm not a resident of the community. Consequently, I do not have a stake in the decisions that the school board is gonna be making, that the community is going to be influencing and being involved in. I have almost forty-seven years of experience... I have almost 47 years of experience in the schools. So I've, I've been around a little bit. I'm currently the John and H. Irene Peters Professor of Education and also Professor of Justice Studies. So I've studied schools, been in schools for extended periods of time. As a facilitator, my job today, or this evening, is to essentially guide the discussion. I'll be the discussion leader, helping the, the group members to be full participants in the discussion. The facilitator is neutral. I have no stake, as I said earlier. And the outcomes are the deliberations. I do not take part in the deliberations. My job is to keep, keep it moving along and make sure that we're, that it's a productive meeting. I will be guided by the school board's policies regarding community input. I ask that we respect the time allotted to community input. I believe it's three minutes, is that correct? I request that speakers be concise and stay on topic. I ask that community members join the school board members in listening with an open mind, accept others as worthy of listening to and learning from, and that we separate the people from the problems and the issues that we're going to discuss this evening. It's not the people, it's the issue that we focus on. There are three options with alternatives within the specific options. The first option is to reconfigure the grade levels in the two elementary schools, making changes with them. It has two alternatives. The second option is to close Memorial School and move those students, is it, Baky, Bakky?
Baky.
Baky, thank you. Baky Elementary School. There are no alternatives to that option. The third option is to close Sanborn Middle School. There are six, six options to that, six alternatives to that options. That gives us a total of nine options with alternatives to discuss. I have a hard stopping time that I was given of 9 o'clock. If we try to take each one of these in order, we will be able to allot approximately 12 minutes for each one. Instead, after talking with the superintendent, we decided that we try to, that we should look at trying to allocate the time in a different manner. So I will be asking to see which of the three options is the most important for you. Which ones are the ones you want to hear about? Which are the ones that you want to speak about? We'll start with those and then move towards, through those, through that option to the other options. Questions on that process? It's a little bit different, rather than just taking 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. We'll have a different allocation for different times. But we will focus on those that are the greatest interests of the community. No questions with that? Well, go ahead. And I wanted, so what, I'd like for you to raise your hand if you're most interested in discussing Option 1, reconfigure elementary grade levels, consolidating amongst the two buildings in grade level spans. If the reconfiguring of elementary is the most important one to you that you want to hear about and talk about, just raise your hand, please. Okay? Option 2, close Memorial School and reassign PK 5 to Baky? To Baky Elementary School. If I could see the hands that are most interested in that one.
You might need to ask it a different way. Like, what are you most concerned about or most engaged about?
Would you, that sounds fine. Which one are you most concerned, are you most concerned, are you most concerned with this option? And then if I could see hands with it, please, so I can get, and the board can help as we kind of take a look around. I'm sorry, it's over.
Fellas, fellas, do you need their name and what town to put in minutes?
Could you just hold on one moment for a second? I, I need to talk to our transcriber. Are you going to need their na, you're going to need them to come up and when they talk so you can get their name and, and?
So, I, I'll answer the question just to move this forward. As I said, you might have missed it. I did speak to this right at 6 o'clock, but I'll do it again now. Any of these options are viable. But options that would require us to change the grade level configuration of pre-K 6 at the elementary schools would need to have a 2/3 supermajority vote to amend the original articles. So the first step is, do we want to do that? And the second step is, if we do, that's the process. Does that make sense? And so I think what, what our facilitator is trying to do is to figure out, I'm just going to kind of keep us moving here. Do you all want to talk about the middle school first? So if you do, just raise your hands. Because that's what he wants to know. He wants to move this. If you don't, he's going to keep going through all these options.
Third option. Raise your hand if you're most interested in discussing or interested in, want to hear about closing the middle school. I don't think I need to count. So we'll go ahead and start, start using, getting ready to start that. The speaker may use his or her time, about the three minutes, to either ask a question or phrase a response to the option. I'll work you through the options. The school board will not take any questions at this time. This is the time for them to, to, to hear, to listen to what the community has to, has to say. Specific questions seeking clarification will be answered by the appropriate school personnel. I'm not the expert in, in, in this study. We want to make sure that you get appropriate information. I will keep the time. And when you're about a minute out, you'll get the caution folder. I'll be sitting in the middle so I can face you. When we start getting right towards the end, it'll be the red folder. Right after that, the music from the orchestra will come up. And that will be the signal to, to very, and I'll do this very politely when I raise it. I won't throw it at you. I will signal those. So I, so don't make eye contact with me though, please, so I know that you caught on to it. It is important that we do this. We need to make space for many of your friends and neighbors to have the opportunity for their three minutes to also comment on this important topic as you have been afforded your three minutes. So I will be, I'll be watching, particularly the number of hands that I saw. Questions about how we're going to deal with this? We're going to start then. I'll, I'm going to move back over there. I won't have much to say, except to kind of move, keep moving you along. We'll start with the, the, the third option on closing the middle school. As you look at that, we can see there's essentially a question to answer that seems to drive everything else in my estimation. Should the high school be a 6-12 or should the high school be a 7-12? The organization from the elementary school then makes that decision in many ways. So, I think that the way that I'm going to approach it isn't write A, B, C, D, E, F. I'm going to take the ones that look at the 6, 6-12 organization first. Any questions with that? Any objections to it? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Andrews, are you to go first? The numbers, the same ones are told us the numbers from the high school, was that the high school definitely can hold the middle school students. And that elementary schools hold the 6-12 students?
I can answer that. So I think it's important to note that, that moving the 7th and 8th grade to the high school building, thank you, the facility, because certainly I would want to make sure that we have a 7th and 8th grade experience that's a middle, middle school experience regardless of the location, is acceptable without adjusting the Articles of Agreement. If the 6th grade is moved to the high school facility, the Articles of Agreement need to be adjusted because the Articles of Agreement say that we will have to have an elementary school, which is defined by state statute as kindergarten to 6th or kindergarten to 8th. Right? So technically, right now, Baky is a little behind, and I'm trying to find out how that happened. It might have had something to do with the supermajority when the middle school was built. I've been, I've asked for those files to review those. And Attorney Goro's office is reviewing them. But for our purposes tonight, I think that we should, we should start the conversation about the middle school with whether or not the 7th and 8th grade would come up to the high school facility and 6th grade would go to the elementary schools. And yes, they can hold those students. The NASDAQ study does say that, but it's kind of in there in the details. So I didn't want to go through the whole thing. But it is, it is clear that that would work.
Yes. Oh, yeah. We're going to start, what we're going to start, did you say that you wanted to start with the 7-12 option first with that?
Unless, unless there's an objection from the audience, I think that's the logical place to start.
Okay. We'll start with Option 3B. So if you, I think everybody has a sheet with it listed. We concede 3, 3B, grades PK 6, Memorial Elementary PK 6, Bakky, Baky, grade 7-12, Sanborn High School. Then with that, we'll go ahead and start. And if you'd like to start, please.
Thank you. Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. My question is more of a general one. I wanted a clarification on the reason why this NASDAQ study was conducted. It was my impression, and I may be wrong, so that's why I'm asking for clarification, was that the capital improvement plan, which was adopted by previous school board, seemed to have costs that were enormously high in relation to the enrollment projections. Is that true, the impetus for the NASDAQ study?
The impetus for the NASDAQ study from the, by the school, so the school board asked the business administrator and I to hire NASDAQ to study our facility's enrollment because we were trying to figure out where our enrollments would go in the future and what the best options would be to facilitate a process to deal with that. Because our, our enrollments have been dropping for a number of years.
Resource allocation.
Yeah, resource allocation. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it really is about figuring out that first slide that I shared before we started. How do we, how do we manage balancing all of these things?
So that, that includes the costs?
Absolutely. Costs are, are, as I said, I mean, everything, time costs money.
So as I look at these options, and I'm trying to weigh what would be best for our students and our community, I see no cost here. So I think that's a big gap that needs to be identified before we can evaluate which one of these options we feel is the best if we're looking at allocating resources and cost being a significant factor. So I was wondering if there are any costs that have been identified that go with each of these options? And if so, when we might be able to see what those costs are?
So what we, if, for the folks who attended the previous board meeting, the business administrator and I asked the board to evaluate all of the different options and then ask us to research two options in detail. Because it takes a tremendous amount of time to cost out all of these options. We can't do them all. So, you know, in light of the knowledge that we would need a 2/3 supermajority to reorganize the elementary school, we have begun the process of looking at the costs for the 7th and 8th grade moving to the high school facility. Having said that, the first look was the fact that the middle school, if should we continue to run it, the current building, would need about $3.5 million over three years. That does not, we have not analyzed all of the costs regarding, cost savings regarding staff or electricity or heat. We, we aren't there yet because the board hasn't directed us to do that yet. As soon as we receive direction from the board, we will begin researching in detail a couple of options.
And when would you expect to, thank you, make a decision? And I, I know you need to present it to the community. Do you have any idea when this might be presented to the community? And then if it were to pass, how many years would it take to actually implement it? Because looking at the projections from the study, a lot of that was based on what the capacity would be in certain years. So if this isn't even going to be able to realistically put into effect until three years from now, are you looking at what the enrollments are projected for three years from now? And would share that with the community? Because I think that's a valuable thing again for us to make an informed decision.
I can answer that. Thank you.
Excuse me, Todd, if I can just, something I didn't bring up at the beginning. If I did my numbers correct, within the next five years, there's a 13% drop in the population of the students in this district. By 2027, you're looking at about 25% reduction based on the NASDAQ numbers. And Mary, who I know does the numbers well, with my numbers correct, I did five in 10 years. So in the next five years, you're looking at about a 13, almost 14% reduction in student population. And by 2027, you're looking at about a 25% reduction. Now, this is based on the NASDAQ study. And that's why I brought it up at the beginning, that when we, well, we didn't. But the last board contracted with NASDAQ, yeah, did a NASDAQ study, they were off, I believe, two students.
One.
One student.
10 years later.
So that's 10 years later. So we're, we're, we're pretty, I'm pretty solid in believing their numbers based on their past history. So knowing that those numbers are going down that significantly, I think it's significant. You've got an idea where we're coming from. It's your school district, folks. You elect us. I just want to say that. Sorry, Todd, but go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. I was getting ready with the yellow folder. Let's take one from here, then here, and then here. I will forget which one. I'll look back at this side belt to be the similar ones. From the middle, from the middle, please. And this, we're still on B at this point. Actually, we're going to do B, D, and F, any of those in there. So they are a group.
Hi, my name is Kelly Cullavan. I'm from Newton. Us Newton moms actually made it out tonight. My question is, is that with pre-K through 6 at Memorial and pre-K through 6 at Baky, Memorial is significantly smaller than Baky. How are we going to fit a whole nother grade in Memorial School when we just have enough room for pre-K through 5 now? That's my first question. My second question is, and this will pretty much cover all the rest for 7 through 12, what is the plan of putting 7 through 12 in the high school building? Not in the high school, but the high school building. Are we building walls? Are we separating them? Are we turning into Timber Lane where it's one building, separated by two separate school systems, two separate schools, two separate entrances, two separate bells, two separate everything? I think a lot of parents would feel a lot better knowing if that was the plan, not just that we're going to throw these kids in a separate wing and hope they don't run into each other. It's a beautiful building. We certainly have the room for them. It would be great to be able to utilize 7 through 10 in this building. But there's going to have to be some modifications for we parents to feel comfortable with that. So those are, those are my two observations.
So I would, I would say that, as I explained to the first person who spoke, we, we have not, in the same way that we have not taken a deep dive into any numbers, we have not totally taken a deep dive into what the layout would be. But I will assure you that I have been looking at the maps of the buildings, thinking about where walls would need to be constructed, where doors would need to be. Because the goal from us as administration, if we're directed to do this, okay? If we are asked to?
Because it's not a bad idea.
I, I hear that. I think what people want to feel, want to feel is that, A, that all of the concerns that you just listed are legitimate concerns. And having been a middle school guidance counselor for four years in my career, it's very important to me that we have a middle school experience in, in the facility.
Yeah, independent of the high school, right.
So I've been looking at the different maps. And if we put a wall here, and we put doors here, and we had the bigger bathroom here, and where would the teacher's room be for those teachers? And what would it be to make a, 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 a middle school experience? But it's in its infancy, so I'm not ready to pop a map up there and show it to you.
Right. But that, but that... But you can assure us that that is what the plan would be?
I am not comfortable with middle school kids being in this facility unless they're having a middle school experience.
Okay. Perfect.
And if that means a separate entrance needs to be created, then that's what I will share.
Okay.
I might have to ask you all to fund it, but that would be something that we would...
Well, it's a lot cheaper than fixing windows in the middle school.
And that's the question before you as a community.
Right.
What was your first question?
My first question was, how, you know, we're already basically at capacity at Memorial. How in the world would we fix, fit 6th graders then at Memorial and at Baki?
Yeah. We haven't gone, NASDAQ gives you the numbers.
Yeah.
There's a 10% cushion in those numbers. We are not yet at the point where the board has directed us to go that deep.
Okay.
We will definitely figure it out. But I have spoken with a number of people and, you know, you have to remember, you're not moving the whole 6th grade to Memorial, you're only moving the...
Half and half.
Yeah. It's only the students from Newton that would stay there. The other students would go to 6th grade at Baki.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
If I could just add, the NASDAQ study is on the website, and it does show in the first couple of years that there is a concern regarding the enrollment and the capacity to accommodate that scenario.
Okay.
And we may have to keep the portables a little longer than we wanted to to accommodate that.
Right. And the only reason why I was bringing up this scenario with that is because we're on that one. I think personally, the other ones are a little bit better.
Thank you.
Scott's going to get it for you. Thank you. Ken Wyler from Kingston. I'm looking at the different options and I'm thinking about different things other than just putting students in a class. And I'm thinking about the transportation. And I look at this option that we're looking at now, 3B. It appears to me to be the shortest for bus routes. And I think that's an important thing, both for the amount of time you have to have the student out waiting for the bus and the amount of time they travel on the bus. And this would give you, I think, the least amount of bus travel and bus routes because you're having six of the grades going to the shortest routes and then the rest of them having to go all the way to the high school. But if you do the other things and you're swapping, you're going to have longer bus routes and all the other options. If you're having all the students go to one elementary school in certain grades and all the students go to another school in the elementary school, there are more bus routes for small children that are not comfortable with riding in vehicles and would have to get up a little earlier. So I want to support that for that reason, and I think it's a good idea to look at all the efficiencies. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. When you come up, would you, if there's a specific one of the options on 3B, D, or F? If it's not B, let us know so we can put it up for you.
Thanks. Actually, I had a question about the, this is Gwen McCarthy from Newton. I had a question about the NASDAQ study and some of its assumptions to start. And that is, I noticed that for projecting population, it seemed to focus on a pretty narrow timeframe of about 10 years. And that timeframe covers kind of a unique period in history for people our age as far as the Great Recession we had and the fact that many people lost their jobs, many people put off having children. There's a lot of emphasis in the NASDAQ report about the millennials. There's no discussion about Gen X, which I am, I'm one of those older moms. And I've seen in our community, there's other moms like me who are still having children while they're Gen Xers. And in my nieces and nephews, I see a lot of millennials who they just haven't gotten married and settled down and had families yet. So I question, you know, maybe how that demographic data was pulled together. The second thing I just wanted to raise, and I feel like maybe this discussion is a little stilted because there's all these options, but what hasn't been presented to the group, and maybe I'm the only one who feels this way, is what about first, just the general question of, do you want any of your schools to close? Do you want any of them to not be here anymore? The middle school, Memorial Elementary School? Maybe you need to start with asking the public that before you get into the options, especially because there's very little meat about the options to discuss as far as how exactly would they be implemented? What would the cost be for each option? So to just kind of put the list and say, hey, what do you think about this? It's kind of hard to answer.
Can I respond real quickly? Option 1, got all four schools. Got all four schools. The option was focused on changing the configuration for the two elementary schools. Is that correct? Thank you.
I have two kids in the Newton school system. And I think mine is more of an opinion more than questions. But one of the things is, I saw a lot of the meat in the study. It talked about our budgets, and I understand how important that is. I am a taxpayer. I have one income household, and I understand how important that is. But I didn't see a lot of meat on the kids. I have a BA in child psychology. I have a Bachelor of Science in elementary education. All these options, they're talking about transitioning our kids several times. Lots of kids don't transition well. And then you're talking about having kids in the high school, and that's fine. But you want to present this, but then you keep telling me, well, we haven't done the research yet to back that up. Where is my 11-year-old or 12-year-old going to be in comparison to the 18-year-olds? There is no way that we can sit there and think of this as a realistic option until we get that kind of information on where and how you're going to break down this school. And I guess, I think this study was very biased on what you want us to see, that this is the middle school closing. That's how you want us all to view with this. But the thing is, on all these things, you're saying the middle school is so, we don't have the money to put into the middle school. And I see that. Obviously, I can add. And obviously, the taxes hurt me just like it hurts every other family in this community. But until you can turn around and tell me that my child is going to be safe in this high school, until you can tell me that this is not going to hurt them developmentally, I don't think that you can put the budget before our children. And that's my point.
If I may, Todd, for one second, I'm sorry. When you speak, could you spell your name so that Phyllis can get the spelling correctly?
R-I-D-E.
You want me to talk about coming down? At the deliberative session, all of us usually go, you know, when they come down, people who want to speak come down to the front. So rather than, Todd, recognize you, and then you walk down and take time. If you would like to speak, see, I know you, where are you hiding? Yeah, how you doing? If you'd come down and sit, you know, then Todd would know who's speaking next.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. We have one person down. Okay.
You're up.
And you got a gentleman in the middle.
Just like the deliberative session.
I just wanted to point out, for Option 3B, I have, my, sorry, my name's Natasha Little, and I'm from Kingston. I have two children who are two years apart. So a lot of these options of breaking up the kids by, like, ageable, having, like, pre-K, kindergarten first in one school, and then the older kids, like, 6th, 3rd, 4th, and 5th in another school. My kids don't stay home by themselves. So it's, and also, like, I make doctor's appointments. I make them both for the same day at the same time. I'd have to go pick up a kid from one school, then go and pick up another kid from another school. So I just wanted to point that out so that it was something, a factor that other people thought about, that parents might have a hard time if their elementary school kids are at different schools.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Strzokowski, a 30-plus resident of Newton, New Hampshire. And my kids have never gone to a Sanborn regional school system. So I've been paying taxes for over 30 years, but I do support the school system, and I do think it's a, like the doctor said, a status of our community. But what I'd like to do is talk about some logic and some consideration. I'm glad that most of the people here are looking at Option 3, because that's the only one that seems to make any sense when you look at asset utilization. I want to get in line with my partner up in Row 6 there on the buses, but I'm looking at it a little bit different way besides bus, best utilization of buses, but rather the kids also. And Option 3B, you keep the little kids, as I call them, because I'm an old guy, I can say little kids, in their respective communities, and then move them over to a high school later on when they have a little bit maturity. They can spend some time on the bus, and it's not going to be detrimental to their well-being or their whatever. And they'll be able to stay with their friends, and that's important. I really understand that. As far as the lady that before me spoke about not having a hard plan, I really don't think we need a hard plan in keeping the students separated between the middle schools and the high schools. Superintendent has spoke on that, and we have his word, and that he's going to keep them separate. He understands that we can't mix 18-year-olds with 11-year-olds, and I really believe that will happen. So we really need to look at the economics behind how we're going to do this. We need to maximize our school capacities, and there is just, I don't see any logical reason for keeping the middle school open, and you're throwing a lot of money at an asset that's going to be underutilized. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Elwell from Newton. You need the spelling on that right now? Okay. So I've been coming to a lot of these types of meetings, and I hear the same thing. People that have kids in the school system, they get really concerned. I have no kids in the school system. My kids are all graduated. I did have a nephew that lived with us that came to Sanborn, graduated, valedictorian, great experience, great school. What I hear from a lot of people here is fear of 7th and 8th graders coming to this facility. It's not Le Bronx, New York, okay? It's not a prison. It's a very good, reputable high school, okay? Very good experience here. And if you're going to have, it's separated where they have their experience for the 7th and 8th graders and their own pot, their own cafeteria and everything else. I don't see where that's going to be an effect on them or trauma to them, okay? So I'm just thinking that the best solution is the middle school. You can't put $3.5 million back into that school, and then it's going to deteriorate even more, and you've got to put more money into it. You spoke about gas, electric, maintenance, and all the other kid that goes along with it. You get teachers in two different schools. You get, everything comes to one school. Everything's included in this building, okay? So I'm just trying to get everybody to stop thinking that it's not a traumatic experience as everybody thinks it is. And I can't really justify that, but just from what I've heard, there's a lot of fear for this. And my only other question is, this is just a general question, where has this been done and has it been successful? I hear Timberland, all right, or Timberlane, wherever it's called, they have joint schools. It's been around for...
No, they don't. They're separate buildings, but they're within the same parking lot.
I've seen the two buildings. Okay. All right. But is there any schools that have the system that you're talking about? And is it successful? And how long did it take for the kids to adjust to it?
I cannot see, I am new to New Hampshire, so I apologize for my lack of knowledge about some of the local schools. But I do know that Epping has it, and there's another district that I was talking to someone about the other day, but frankly, the name of the district eludes me right now. I'm sorry. Newmarket? There are a number. And, but I just want to be clear that this is really hard on many, many levels. And there's a part of me that wants to kind of say things to help people to ease the pain that might come across as trying to convince them to do something they don't want to do. So I'm trying to balance giving you information that will allay some of this fear with the fact that this is really hard. So the comments that I'm making are really just about assuring you that if I'm asked by our board to move middle school kids to this high school campus, the building was not built for that, and we will have to make some adjustments. Students will walk to the cafeteria and have lunch there at a different time than the high school students. Students will have to go to the gymnasium at a different time than high school students. But for the majority of the day, the middle school students would be in their own area of the building without any contact whatsoever with the rest of the school. That would be, have to be, how it would have to be for me to feel okay with it. And yes, I know that I haven't given you the ins and outs of the details. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your last name when you spoke, but you made some great points. It's impossible to accept this until you see the details. The problem, I agree with you completely, the problem is that the board has not tasked the administration yet with giving the details. And that's the next step. So let's not skip steps. Let's talk about kind of the concerns, because I think what the goal of tonight is, is for the board to hear concerns so that they can consider those before tasking the administration with the next step. Then when the next step occurs, you'll have the opportunity to comment again, right? We're not, this is a process. This is just the beginning. I hope that helps.
We're just kind of giving the board the right now. We just want to pursue.
We're looking for feedback on what to pursue and what the concerns are.
Yep.
Right, right. This is not time for logistics, but there are some costs that people needed to know right out of the gate, such as the renovations at the middle school building. That's not advocacy for or against any decision. It's just a fact.
Thank you. We're still on the 7-12 option at this point, and you're up next.
I'm Liz Walker from Newton. I am the parent of a four-year-old. So it doesn't affect me today, but it will affect my daughter for a very long time. I'm supportive of the 7th and 8th graders coming up to the high school. It may not be as prevalent in New Hampshire, but I grew up in Massachusetts where it happens a lot. My husband actually went to high school in a junior, senior high school. So I've seen it done. I've seen it done very successfully with separate wings, separate times, things like that. My biggest concern is for the little ones with your pre-K. Pre-K is a four-year-old. Sending a four-year-old who lives on the edge of Newton up to Baki for some of these options for two years, bringing them back to Newton, bringing them back to Kingston, seems like an awful lot. And so I just wanted to keep that in mind, show my support for whatever decision we make, and just bring that up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Heatheringham, Newton. I just had one question. If we do close the middle school, that means we will have two buildings in our district that are not being used, and I just want that to be brought to people's attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Ash, Kingston. So in light of keeping everything moving and kind of giving our opinion, if I had to go, I would more so go with 3F. And my reasoning behind that is, is pre-K through 6, I think, I actually have 7th and 8th graders currently. I have two 7th graders and an 8th grader. So if we were at this point, at this day and age, I would have kids in the high school, which, knowing that in the facility, which, you know, I know that we're going to do all that, so I'm in full support for that. But the reason that I would say 4 to 6 is, I felt like when both of my children were in the 5th grade in the Baki, it was almost like they needed more because they were in one classroom with one teacher, with 18 students. And where you go to the middle school, and they go to 6th grade, and it's a science lab, and it's a math lab, and it's different things, that I think that having 4 to 6 and having them together and maybe having the option to have changing classes and changing rules and they're growing and everything would be almost having like a separate, you know, middle school and then the high school. In each age, having their own needs being able to be met. So, and with that, that would be, you know, narrowing it down. That would be, my vote would be for 3F.
Thank you. Sir, you're up.
Dave Rosenberg from Kingston. You talk about $3.5 million if we build a middle school. What about the money it's going to cost you to build the walls and AC units for the high school? Do we pay the AC units where it doesn't... Do we pay the height, the AC units where it doesn't have central air for the students?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand your question. Are you asking how much would it cost?
Yes, how much it's going to cost to build the new walls and all of that.
Thank you. We don't have estimates yet at this point.
Right, exactly. You don't have the, what it's going to cost, the, the taxpayers.
Right, right.
But you have a estimate, it's going, what it's going to cost to close the middle school.
Right. Right, we haven't been, as soon as the board tasks us with moving forward with a process, which I think, you know, will happen hopefully over the next few meetings, we will go deeper. But I can certainly say that just from the work that I've done in the district already, building walls and moving things around, we would need to build an entrance for middle school-specific students. And we would need two, two doors built on, on two different floors of the building.
What about the AC?
Well, I, our building does not have AC. And the middle school does not have AC.
Well, then there's more body heat for the children when they come in and they're going to be hot, right?
No, they'll be fine. Air conditioning is something that I've talked about a lot and it's a concern that we should probably address eventually district-wide, but it is extremely expensive. There's no AC at the high school. Only in the auditorium and the library. Yeah, thanks, I forgot that, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Gluck from Newton. And I would just like to say, I, this proposal is the one I, I support in reviewing all the most. I think it makes the most sense for obvious reasons that have been discussed about transportation and the cut of the grades. I'd like to just, going forward, if this was to become something that the administration is tasked by the board, I would like to hear about the plans to quote mothball the middle school. Like a previous speaker mentioned, we would have two buildings. We have the old seminary campus right now that is mothballed. There is a, a cost associated with that. There's a cost associated with closing in any building. What are the potential options to use for that, the middle school building? Would we move our SAU office there? If we are using this building to have seventh and eighth graders, will we need the space where the administration offices are now to support the additional students here? Also Fremont. So Fremont, high school students come here now. Fremont is having capacity issues, I believe, at the Ellis School. So, we also have a tuition agreement with Fremont that expires in six or seven years. All those things, in my mind, need to be considered because they're all part of this whole process in, in realignment of grades and, and funding. So, those are some concerns that I, I just want to put out there that I hope that the board will be thinking about. And then also, I would have to say, when this does come, if it comes to the next step, I would really like to hear from an administrator and an educational perspective, the impacts that a reconfiguration of grades, having pre-K to six, having seventh and eighth here at this building. I think there's a lot of great opportunities that that brings to students. But I'm not an educator, but I, I also think that it means loss of possible jobs because you're going from two separate buildings with building principals, teachers like music, art, PE, things like that overlapping. So, all those things, I think, really need to be spelled out to the community before any proposal comes forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Annie Collier, Newton. I'd like to say that I like three B a lot because it doesn't need a warrant article, it simply can be done. And the assurance that there would be a middle school experience for the kids is extremely important. I think there are also some tremendous advantages educationally that the superintendent has referred to a few times, as far as access to some of the teaching facilities and, and things like that. And one of the things that he's also emphasized that I found very important is that any teachers who were teaching both high school students and middle school students would be trained carefully to be able to deal appropriately with each age group. So I think that what I'm finding is that our superintendent is really looking very carefully at the concerns for those things. I would say that I really like three F as well, if that were to pass in a warrant article. There are a few things that I'd like to hear very much outlined as far as three F. And some of those are, yeah, you know, the cost savings, that's part of it. But then, how much efficiency can there be with having all the kids as far as pre-K through three together with getting that early childhood literacy training? And using our facilities in the best possible way to make sure that each child is getting that foundation that they need? And then grades four to six, being able to have that math experience with a math coordinator and with math help really coming in so that our improvement as a district starts to happen. I'd really like to see that laid out as far as what the educational possibilities and potential are for that option. I liked what Mrs. Gluck was saying about Fremont and seeing what they might be interested in as far as seventh and eighth grade if they were to come to, to a middle school experience at our high school. And to see, you know, whether, whether that would work, whether they would be interested in a tuition agreement like that. So that they could also have that experience and prepare their kids in the best possible coordinated way for high school and for career and college readiness. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll just take another minute or two on the, on the seven twelve option. I'm going to cover the six twelve, so if you have something you want to say on the seven twelve, make sure that you're, because we won't shift and you go to the six twelve option. Sir, you're up.
Ian McGregor, MCG. Resident Newton, I personally went to Triton Regional School District, which is just in Massachusetts, just south of the border, and it was a, the, this option that we're speaking about right now, where the elementary schools in three communities were, actually kindergarten, there were no pre-K, but kindergarten through six. And then the seventh and eighth grade was at the high school building. The buildings were attached, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, a number of the specialty rooms, obviously the theater, the home ec rooms and the auto shop and the wood shops. We had those in high schools when I was there. But those were co-used between both the junior high school and the high school. And it was a seventh and eighth grade experience for the junior high school and then obviously nine through twelve. The configuration of the building was the seventh and eighth grade had their own separate wing of the building, their own classrooms, and there were obviously connecting hallways. The high school also had kind of their own wing because the building was designed this way. So all the high school classrooms were in that. And then there was, the other wing included all of your cafeteria, gym, theater and, and shoprooms. And then through scheduling and different changes of times from the classes, you wouldn't have an interaction in the hallway because we were separated by the schedule changes. So, it, it worked okay. So I'm not necessarily opposed out of all of the options here. That one would be my choice for, for my children. And I have a six-year, a nine-year-old, a six-year-old and a three-year-old. So we're, we're quite vested in exactly what's going to happen throughout this. So either this option or option B, possibly F, is currently what we're looking at if, if the option is close the middle school, because that's where we need to be based on the budget. I want to thank Mr. Ambrose for being upfront, straightforward and honest. It's something we find is, is missing a lot. Sometimes it's a feeling need to sugarcoat it, sometimes it's a feeling of, well, maybe if I kind of say it this way or this way, it'll be easier. I would rather have the administrator put it right out blunt, understanding that sometimes it is a bit of their perspective, but that's what we're paying them to do is give us their perspective because of their knowledge. So things that really, I just wanted to list out real quick, what I would consider is bus routes for small children. Again, having a three-year-old who will be going through, you know, pre-K, kindergarten and all. We're not that far away, but being in Newton, shipping my young ones off to Bakersfield, not sure about, you know, that's a little uncomfortable feeling, have to get over it if that's the option that the community chooses to move to. The, the transition of children multiple times, I, I agree with that comment that was made. I think if we kind of, you know, I, I like the idea of sticking again to options A or B, because A or B only transitions our children, you know, from one building to another building and then they'd be kind of in that same building and they'd be comfortable with it, moving from seven and eight to nine. And then last, I'd just like to hear some, some education opinions or studies or data about a complete reconfiguration, as in like an F, where we're completely changing, you know, having a elementary, middle, junior high and then high school experience. So if we're going to change that and do something wild. Thank you.
Thank you. Three people, one, excuse me, one, two, three. Do you want to speak on this one also? Four, and then at that point I am going to stop. Seven twelve and we will move to six twelve is an option. You will vote one, two, three, four. Five on four on seven twelve option, and you're up. Todd.
I'm Caitlin Foucher of Newton, F-O-U-C-H-E-R. I have a kindergartner, so this is going to affect her whole career in the Sanborn regional. I am uncomfortable with her being even on a bus with ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders. Because as Joanne stated, kids develop differently. And while she may be precocious as far as intellect, she's still a little kid. And we need to protect our children and let them be little kids. They're exposed to so much and putting them in a situation where they are going to be exposed to older kids. And I understand that we're going to separate it, but you're calling it a campus. A little kid shouldn't be on a campus. I mean, the difference between one eleven-year-old and another eleven-year-old can be huge. Some of them have developed and are interested in grown-up things where some of them go home and play with toys. I mean, we need to remember that it's not just the budget we're worrying about, it's the actual children. And if we're going to combine all these, what's going to happen to the class sizes? I mean, right now she's in a class with thirteen other kids and that's fantastic. But we're already finding that she is not getting necessarily the attention that she needs because there's other kids who have issues that need more attention than hers. And so if we're combining all these kids into bigger classes at different grade levels, I mean, how many kids are going to get lost in the cracks?
Kelly Calvin from Newton. And I just wanted to piggyback on something Nicole Ash had said. We both have daughters that are in middle school. And one thing that she had said was that, you know, by the time our girls were in fifth grade at the middle school, they, they were ready. They wanted out. They, they felt they needed more. They needed more stimulation, they needed more as far as changing classes, having labs, having projects, having things that they didn't have resources to at the elementary schools. So I thought that there was an option, but apparently I must have read wrong, that pre-K through four would be at Bakersfield, five and six would go to Memorial, and seven and eight would be moved into the high school building in a separate section.
That's actually three F, but it's pre-K three.
Okay.
And four, five, six.
I think it would be better served as pre-K through four. But that's my opinion.
We asked NASDAQ to do that and they said that the capacity isn't there yet.
Okay.
So if we, if our enrollments did continue to decline, which, I mean, even NASDAQ themselves says no one has a perfect crystal ball.
Right, right.
But they, 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 you know, you have to remember that our current first graders would be in, in tenth grade before this is done, so they're not really fictional numbers.
Right.
They're actual students that are in seats.
Right.
That they can see. It's the, the future first graders ten years from now that I wonder about some days.
Right. My, my only concern is, and like I said, it, it was the fact that I think pre-K through six is pushing it. Pre-K through five already, these, these fifth graders are just itching and screaming to get out of elementary school. And as much as we want to keep them, you know, with the first and second graders, they're like, oh my God, I'm with first and second graders. So it's, you know, it's kind of a, a different age range. So maybe that pre-K through three, four, five, six, seven, eight. But just, I wanted to piggyback on what Nicole said, that, you know, they need the extra resources. They need, they're, they're ready for it. They're ready to be more stimulated.
Can I make one comment? I know we're, I, I really agree with you that I, I would be very uncomfortable putting an eleven-year-old on a bus with a seventeen-year-old. So one thing that we've discussed as an administrative team and one thing that I've been thinking about is, could we have a later start time if the, if middle school students' school was placed at the high school? Could we have a later start time and have them have a different bus? I, I, I want you to hear that I'm thinking that far in, okay? I know this is hard. And if you want to come meet with me, I'd love to sit down, you know?
Just so you know, I had that same conversation with him the other day, our daughter's...
I'm happy to, yeah. Come on over and talk to me, please, any of you. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, sir.
John LeBlanc from Kingston. Just to, I guess to start it, none of the options talked about Fremont and I know it was mentioned, but I'm curious if the school board, as part of their request to NASDAQ, thought about talking about including Fremont as part of our SAU? I'm sure they're coming up against the same type of things that our district is coming in with decaying enrollments. And they have one school, it's Ellis. And possibly there was some way that they could have been factored into these. I don't know if it was explored or talked about and discounted, but just a question, I guess, to the board, if they have to answer.
Explored, talked about and not discounted, but there's no, nothing to report. Superintendent Hut and I have a very good relationship and we talk regularly about our students. And so I certainly, there are three things that have been brought up that are kind of like wondering, wondering white elephants. One is the seminary campus. The other is what would happen to the middle school if we closed the, that facility, closed it so to speak, or didn't no longer have students there, would be more accurate. And the other is Fremont. And I can tell you that there is a committee that's meeting regularly to discuss the seminary campus. And when it's time for that committee, remember they started two years ago negotiating with the town of Kingston, that's happening. And when they're ready, there will be information about that that's shared. Right now it's confidential because it's negotiations. There are all kinds of ideas about the facility at the Newton campus that I can't share yet because we haven't even been directed to do anything yet. But the third piece about Fremont is that we're always talking to them about our students. And there are many ideas being thrown around, which is great because that's the first step to creativity, right? So, we're going for it. Thanks for bringing it up, I just thought I'd let you all know.
Thank you. One, one comment about having the seventh and eighth grade separated from the sixth grade. Currently, they all participate in athletics together. I'm assuming they all participate in band together. I know there's bands at the, at the elementary level as well. Wondering if the thought has been about how that would be accommodated? Would we still have sixth graders participating in middle school athletics? Or in busing them maybe to the high school if the seventh and eighth grade were up here? Or, and/or band, is that now, do they play with the middle, elementary school band and, and how that would all be? Just something to think about, as a concern.
When we send out the survey, would you put that in there, please? Because there will be a survey going out to the community for feedback.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, that's a really great question.
And my last question is related to the operating capacity at the high school. If we're gonna, I know we're talking about obviously trying to separate seventh and eighth graders and/or sixth graders if they came up here too. How does that affect the operating capacity that the NASDAQ survey had given, you know, had provided? Does that change the configuration of the high school in such a way that the operating capacity is actually lower and therefore we got to be a little more careful with that 10% buffer that they gave us? But just a, more of a question of how that, I don't know if the NASDAQ took that into account that it would be separate, you know, we would really keep them separate and not commingle the grades at the high school.
Yeah, I, I think that they did in, in essence, but it's important to remember that the NASDAQ study is numbers, not programming. There's no finances attached to the NASDAQ. It's projections of enrollments and physical capacity and the condition of our buildings. So, so I think it was really important to note that they were exhaustive. They met with realtors, town officials, they didn't just come here and walk around the buildings and measure things, they were here a long time. And, um, yes, they did. They felt comfortable putting the sixth grade here. And I even asked them that, that should the need ever arise, and I'm not... the need ever arise, and I'm not saying that it is, but if, if we should ever have a situation where we needed to accommodate, if we moved the seventh and eighth grade students to the high school and had a situation where we might need to accommodate Fremont's seventh and eighth grade students, that that would even work. But I'm not saying it would be comfortable, and I'm not saying it would be easy, and I'm not saying everyone would be happy. There's a difference between what you can do, what you should do, and what works. And we have to make sure that whatever we do works.
And I'd like to echo the comments from other people about the educate, you know, after we figure this all out, showing how this is gonna impact the education of the kids. I have a senior, that's it. I've had three others that passed through and they're not gonna be affected by this, but care about the other kids that are in the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Jamie Fitzpatrick from Newton. Uh, I just wanna start by thanking the board for actually, uh, commissioning this report to look into this. Uh, I'll go all the way back to when we started at six o'clock and we started about the goal setting and a, a, a number of people, and I think, uh, I think Ms. Lidle made the point, and then it was echoed further, that these things are all tied together, that, that these goals and objectives we talked about and, and this study, these are all tied together with the goal of, I think Mr. Baker pointed out, that there's a balancing act to be had in terms of the, the tax burden on the community and in terms of the outcome and the performance of the students. Uh, if I look at these lists, the one that I would prefer would be three B. Um, one of the reasons that I'd prefer three B is it does provide for some savings with the closing of the middle school. That savings money can be used to, to fund things that are directly tied into student achievement and student performance. Things like these interventional levels that were mentioned by the, uh, by Superintendent Ambrose. In terms of, there shouldn't be, it's, it's, you're either doing well or you're going into special education. If you're not doing well, why are you not doing well? And what are we doing to make it so you're doing better and that you get well and that you are able to perform and you're able to deliver? This would allow for funding to do that. It would allow for funding to allow our teachers to be given a compensation level similar to other school districts so we do not lose our best and our brightest to competing school districts, so we can keep them in our own district. Because the single most important item, in my opinion, in terms of improving performance is teacher excellence in education with the students. That is the main driver that is gonna help those students perform. When you talk to kids or you talk to adults and they talk about their school years, they will talk about the teacher that had influence on them. They don't talk about, there was thirteen kids in my class, or there was twelve kids in my class. They talk about the phenomenal Mrs. Smith that really engendered me with a belief in history or whatever the case may be. Um, so I think that this is a good way to be looking at what we are doing as a community to say, how do we reallocate resources to put them to what the charter is? And the charter is to give better education with better results to the students in the community. I'd also say on B, the reason I like three B is it leaves the youngest alone. It leaves the youngest amongst us in the local community where they live. They don't get on buses, they don't travel far away from home, they're in their own local school district. In terms of switching, in terms of, uh, transitions, it's less transitions. In terms of campuses, I agree with the statement that the superintendent made that you do not want and cannot have middle schoolers mingling with high schoolers, eighteen-year-olds and eleven-year-olds mingling in hallways, et cetera. So you're gonna have to have that separation. It gives an elementary school to middle school to high school today in terms of campuses. In the tomorrow world, it would be elementary school to high school. So it actually reduces your transitions. So I think it's a good, uh, aspect. I also understand that you don't have all the details yet, you're not expected to have all the details yet. Uh, I reserve judgment based upon what you bring back when you bring your details in. If you bring your details in and I look at the details and I don't find them very enticing, then I would have a whole nother set of questions. But the starting point is to get the details until they focus some efforts as to how do we rebalance and how do we direct and get what we need from the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, this part, we, uh, we can quick look at six, twelve, but let me phrase the question in this way. You've had a number of comments that deal with the seventh graders going in with concerns. I would assume that, that those concerns would be the same as you brought the sixth graders in. So if you could want to speak to something different or in favor of six, twelve, somehow let me know. Otherwise, we're gonna do the other two and then we are gonna come back to you. I want to also give you the chance to deal with the other two options. With the remaining time, we will come back to this and finish off with, uh, with this section here. Was there anybody who wanted to speak positively towards six, twelve?
Positive.
Um, if we can keep seventh and eighth graders separated at the high school, we can certainly keep six, seventh and eighth graders separated here. Uh, as, following, following Mr. LeBlanc, it solves a lot of issues with your sixth graders who are now participating in middle school extracurricular activities and athletic activities. Um, it also keeps your sixth grade curriculum and the way it's taught the same. If sixth graders go to the elementary schools, you either have to have them rotating through four teachers every day, which I'm not sure you have the, the rooms in the schools to do it, um, or you're, now they are one teacher teaching, um, the four different disciplines that they study at the middle school. So I see six, twelve as being better than seven, twelve only because it keeps six the way it is, learning the way it is now, and, and, and socializing the way they are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Henson, and sir, you'll follow.
You can go first, 'cause I'm on my second round.
Oh, okay.
My name's Matthew Liakos, L-I-A-C-O-S, from Newton. I'm actually a, a new resident to Newton. I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, so I'm quite invested in this. Um, I just wanted to comment, one of the gentlemen back there was a Triton alumni. Um, I'm actually a, a current employee of Triton. Um, I have been for five years now, so I see it every day, and I know that it works well, so I just wanted to kinda comment on that.
Do you define it, you mean the seventh and eighth grade being?
Yes, so the Triton, Triton Regional School District, um, right now as it stands is a seven through twelve. It is one physical building that is partitioned through hallways and doors and, and entrances to be two separate schools. Um, I am not a teacher, so I'm not in the classroom seeing that, I'm actually in the business office, but I do go through the hallways, I see the students, how they interact, and how, there is a very clear separation between grade seven and grade nine or grade twelve for that matter. So, um, just wanted to give that perspective.
Would you be willing to give me a tour?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll call my office, I'd like to come.
I'll call your office or I'll contact you. I'm certainly, um, glad to give you a tour or put you in touch with my superintendent. I work pretty closely with him, so, um, he can give you some good information there. Um, I will probably eat these words seven or eight years from now when I do have a twelve-year-old, but I think, um, when you're looking at sixth graders and seventh graders, it's kinda split in hairs, at least developmentally, as to where you put them. Um, I think it's, for me, really concerning if you're looking at option one or the latter options of shipping a six, seven-year-old across to another town that's foreign, they don't know about. I personally will not do that to my six-year-old. I'm not gonna send him off to a town that he is not comfortable with. That's just not an option for me, so, um, that's it.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. Um, and talking about, I, I'm not, uh, well-versed on this, but I know that there are, uh, different models for teaching, uh, middle school, which is six through eight, and then seven, eight, uh, seven, eight is a junior high school. So I'm wondering how that might impact the way that instruction is delivered if, um, six through eight was not the model as it currently is. Um, also, um, someone else had mentioned, where would the SAU office go? Um, those who've been here for a while remember that several years ago, we've had this dilemma about where to put the SAU office. And luckily, we didn't, we had space here in the high school building to house the SAU office. Looking at these projections, the ten years that were looked at historically, um, the last ten years, we've been in a recession. We're coming out of it now. So has that been considered, that our economy is now on the upturn? When this high school was built, they said, when they build it, when we build it, they will come. And then the bottom dropped out of the economy. So they were planning on, because the trends were going up at that point. Um, so my, my question is, um, if we did need to expand this building, there was a space that was left for an additional wing when they planned this building, but there was also some discussion of putting the greenhouse there. Um, so I'm thinking that might be something to reconsider if we're going to have more students in here of where that greenhouse is gonna go so we don't have to tear it down if we do have to indeed, um, put an additional wing on.
Uh, could I just, that, the greenhouse is on total pause while we do this, it's not happening at all.
Okay.
So we, just, just so there's no confusion in the community, that was decided last year.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to make sure folks knew that, that we decided not to do that because we weren't sure of what the outcome would be of this work. Thanks, you're, you're correct that that is an area that could be added on to.
Okay. Um, and then the last thing is, would there need to be any structural changes to the elementary schools by including sixth grade there as well? Again, talking about developmental ages, would sixth or fifth and sixth grade possibly be separated in a different part of the elementary school buildings, um, if that were to be the model? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Campbell, Newton. I, I just wanted to go on record to say that if I look at all these options, as a parent, I emphatically don't want any of them. I want the schools to stay how they are. I want my children to have a middle school. I appreciate these experiences, I want them to have a middle school. I want them to have a high school, you know, pull another town. So I just, because I hadn't heard that yet, like emphatically, none. And because I look at option one, A and one B, where they list all the schools still, that's not, that, sure, keep them as they are, please, keep them as they are. Um, I'm a realist, I hear what you're saying about the budget, and it sounds to me what you're saying is that the middle school needs to close for financial reasons. So if, if that's the case, I wanna hear that. I don't wanna be presented with all these, I wanna hear the middle school really needs to close. And if that's what has to happen, and I'm looking at these for the record, then my plan B way down here is option, you know, three B or three F, but I'd need a lot of salesmanship from you guys on child safety and all that. But really would like to see them stay how they are. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need to make sure that people have an opportunity to respond to one, it's come up twice now, which keeps all four buildings. I don't keep all four buildings, one A. Figured elementary grade levels consolidating, well, two buildings, two grade levels, there's great pre-K through Bakersfield, Bakersfield, three, five, Memorial, six, eight, Sanborn Middle School, nine, Falls and Fourth High School. If somebody wanted to speak to that specifically. Okay? If anybody wanted to speak to option two, which was close Memorial School, speak to that specifically. And we'll go ahead and continue where we were, and you're up.
Just, Annie Collier from Newton. In listening to some of the concerns that some parents had about, um, their kids going from one end of one town to the next town when they're really, really young, I'm wondering if it would be possible to also have NASDAQ form a, a, a kind of a three F, A, to, to say, okay, how about if we left PK and K in the town of origin and then put one to three or four together, and then five and six together, so that you could possibly get some of the educational advantages of having those kids grouped but keep three and four and five and six-year-olds from traveling too far on a bus? So I wanted to ask if that was a possibility for the school board to just take a quick look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you let, if you haven't spoken at all yet? Yes, yeah, I'm gonna let her go.
Pardon?
I'm gonna let her go.
Oh, okay. Please.
Lisa O'Toole from Kingston. Um, so as we all know, change, nobody likes change, right? But change can be good. Um, one of the things that I've been listening to here that so many people have talked about is how much this will impact our kids, how much it will impact us overall as a community across Newton and Kingston. There's so many factors that are impacted by this. We've got the facilities, right? We need to adjust them. We need to figure out the physical location, whether, whatever option it may be, right? We have to adjust the high school, potentially the elementary schools. There's the bus costs, right? We have to adjust for the bus and figure out the schedules for those. The athletics, the fields, for bringing the middle school kids in, I know Kevin mentioned that earlier as well, we need to figure out what's gonna happen with that. Same thing with the arts. Band, chorus, sharing the same rooms, all of that activity. Huge task on, I assume, school board superintendents, the schedules. How are the classes gonna run? How are the bus routes gonna run? Do we change the times for the schools? All of us working parents and working around the times now that it happens, right? And the bus is coming at six fifteen, six forty-five, eight-ten, all those different times for everyone. Faculty and staff adjustments, right? Not only for those that are in the high school today, those middle school teachers that would need to move up, as well as the students and all the impacts for them. Student transition, there has to be a huge plan for any middle schoolers coming into the high school. How are they going to adjust mentally, physically? As well as the teachers. A lot of the teachers, I think, uh, go back and forth and work on different things, especially with athletics, but the teachers will need to adjust coming up to this new location as well. And if we close the middle school, what's gonna happen with the old building? I know that was mentioned earlier as well. So having, I was late to the school board meeting itself, but hearing about the board and the goals being defined, and it took over a year for us to get to the point of some goals established tonight, I believe that's what I was hearing.
No, we had goals last year, but it took us a little while to get to these ones tonight.
Okay. So my question is, what's the plan to get us to defining what the two items are, I think you mentioned, to be tasked with? What's the plan? So NASDAQ was a month ago, right, that we got the results for this? So do we have a plan defined with milestone dates? Who's gonna establish when those two options need to be tasked? And then what are the, um, the due diligence efforts that need to happen for the task force, which I am assuming there's going to be a task force identified, or who's part of that, to do all the work, to get all the cost estimates, to figure out the structural, to figure out all these schedules, and put that plan together to define it? So that's kinda my question.
I, I'm happy to answer that right now for the good of the group. The process as we've defined it so far is that first, we wanted to get the results from the NASDAQ study, the board did. And then once that was brought forward, look at the different options and have a conversation about which ones to explore in more detail. So I'm already hearing some themes tonight that are pretty obvious. Um, so the board will have to decide which ones to, the next step is a survey that everyone can fill out, 'cause some folks couldn't be here tonight. So we want everyone to have an opportunity to provide feedback, and we also wanted to document the questions and concerns. 'Cause there's some great questions, there, all these questions have to be answered. Um, the next step is that the, uh, probably, I'd say the milestone is, is sometime during the second October board meeting, technically the third, because we have one with Fremont, but that's a separate meeting, so the, the standard board meeting. Uh, I would hope that we would have some kind of a guidance either at the first or second board meeting in October for myself, the business administration, and the school leaders to put together a really clear plan with some of the details that folks are really wanting to have tonight. Um, and then once that occurs, the board would have to decide at that time what the next steps will be. So I think it's really important to recognize that right now, we're just trying to figure out how everybody feels, right? I mean, that's why we did this today. I wanted this done as quickly as possible because once the study hits the ground, there's a lot of energy that can get going without information. there's a lot of energy that can get going without information to back it up. And the reality is, no one's made a decision at this point. Nothing's happening right now. But if something is going to happen, we want to know what the questions and concerns are so that we can help you. And the other thing is, I think it's important for everyone to recognize that we know that the middle school needs $3.5 million in renovations only because the previous administration before us studied that. And we have a report that says that. We didn't go out and solicit that as part of this process. We're just telling you, that's existed for two or three years, that knowledge. Again, the windows from the seventies, you know, I mean, it's not a joke. They're really expensive to replace, just the windows. We're talking a significant amount of money. And I don't think that anyone on, from the administrative side is, I've spoken at length with the administrators and we've agreed that this isn't our decision, it's your decision. It's the board's decision, it's the community's decision. We're going to do what we're asked to do, right? And I know that's really hard to hear, but really, you all have to decide what you can reasonably pay for. What I need is the intervention support for kids, one way or the other. So I think I answered your question, but it's all really, truly a web that's co-mingled. And it's really hard. So what we have to do is start the process. The board will have to deliberate on how fast the process goes. So far, the conversations from the board at the last meeting were end of next year, not end of this year, end of next year. That may change, I don't know.
For the decision, the end of next year?
For an actual change to be implemented if there is one. So we've got lots of time here to kind of talk about this. End of, so not the end of this school year, the end of the next school year. It was what they discussed at the last meeting, but they may change that. That's just a preliminary conversation. My hope is that y'all will come to meetings and be involved right from now until the end of this. And hopefully forever, right? We can't run schools without parent input.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Hi, Gwen McCarthy from Newton again. I just wanted to say, you know, we've talked a little bit about how people don't like change. There's a fear of change. And, you know, what's being proposed are, you know, many different options around change. And I don't think that is really what's sitting wrong with me. I mean, I could live with some of these options. I might not like them. And that's the reality of a democracy and compromise. You figure out what you can do with what you've got, and try to make the best decision you can. Three B, three F, maybe. I don't love them. I'd rather keep it just as is, like that other mom said. I see a lot of value to that. But here's my real fear, and I think it's been glossed over a little bit. We could, the school board could, the superintendent could decide to implement one of these changes. And studies could be done, plans, statement of works, contracts, construction, all of which are going to be expensive no matter what option is chosen. And we get down there, and maybe all of a sudden, that 3.5 million to actually fix the middle school doesn't look so bad. Because when you count, when you actually get into the process and you figure out how much it's going to cost to fully implement any of these projects, we could be a little surprised. But here's my bigger fear. We go through this NASDAQ process. We choose a less expensive option because there's a desire to cut costs. And all the things that we're hoping that there'll be money for, like teachers and intervention support and windows and doors at the elementary schools and books, still aren't getting funded. And that's a really, real fear I have because you heard one of the board members say tonight that he wants to propose for next year's budget that it only goes up by 0.5%. So how are you going to make any of these changes? Ostensibly to cut costs in the facilities part. And then have money for other things like teacher contracts, books, windows, doors at the elementary schools. We all know, we have houses or apartments, you have to maintain them. Part of this problem has been created because nothing was maintained for a really long time. So what I want to hear from the board is, whatever option goes forward, you're not going to continue to nickel and dime about all the other things that our kids need.
Again, I have more of an opinion than any real questions. One of the things I want to say is that I'm very glad that I came tonight. There was a gentleman that spoke somewhere in the middle of things, and he really did calm me down when he went, "You know what? Maybe I don't like everything that's proposed, but because we don't have the facts, let's hold off judgment and let's wait until you come back and have the answers that I am looking for." So I do appreciate that I came to this meeting. One thing that I just want to present for all the people that are like, "Oh, well, as long as we keep them separate, you know, everything's going to be fine." There's still a few things that I'm angry at. On the things that were proposed, I feel like what they did was, "Look, shiny light, we're not going to do these things, we're not going to take your little kids and bring them to Kingston. Oh, look, we're, we're just going to close the middle school." When I got out of school, I was in Massachusetts teaching. I was a very young 21-year-old sitting in a meeting just like this. And they were going through a transition, they were one or two years into bringing, and they even went beyond what we're proposing. They brought the fifth grade in to the high school, so it was fifth through 12th. All the parents like me were, "Oh, my goodness, like, we can't have a 10-year-old with a 12-year-old." And everyone stood out there and said, "You know what? It's never going to happen." My first year teaching, it was April, one of my little fifth-grade girls who had a mother very similar to me, I raised my hand, "I am the biggest helicopter mother you will ever find." She came up to me, her mother worked till 2:30 in the afternoon. The bus dropped her off at 2:15. She had 15 minutes by herself every day. We sat there and went, "Your kids are never going to interact with these 12-year-olds." This fifth grader went to me, "Miss Kitzos," which was my maiden name, "I think I'm pregnant." I'm like, "Holy moly, 21-year-old, what am I going to do?" So I go to the kid, "What makes you think that you're pregnant?" And I'm thinking, my fifth-grade self would have thought kissing a boy was going to make her pregnant. The fifth and the 12th grader somehow found themselves in the bathroom. And come to find out, this helicopter mother like me now had a fifth grader that was pregnant. It was a small western Massachusetts town, exact copy and copy of Newton. So I just want to, I thank the gentleman that said, "Hold off judgment, let's get all the facts." And I will definitely do that, but I don't want you to think that those things can't happen.
Thank you. Were there any last comments? Let me compliment you on the way in which this discussion was conducted. Your thoughts on, you listened to each other, your passion with this, as there should be, it's your children. A very, very respectful audience. It was very nice to talk to you. Just a lot of schools, but yeah, you really did a good job with this. And I turn it back to you, it's yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have, and I'll be talking to the people who want to discuss things because we may put some things on until the next meeting. But we still have, by my count, five, six, plus a non-public. So, but what I would like to do, because I know I've already got the high sign from a couple of members, we'll take five minutes. So the meeting will not be over. There are still five items. If you have a copy of the agenda, we'll take a five-minute break, come back and conclude our business.
And thank you to everyone who's here, if you choose to leave. Thank you for being here tonight.
We're back in session.
Can I have that?
Huh? No, good, thank you.
Can I have the cable back over this here?
You want the projector cable? All right. I think Pam Brown would like that.
Okay.
All right, so this is probably pretty quick. We have a situation by which the SATs conflict with one of our early release days. So the administration just asked me if we could alter the calendar and move that date one week earlier from the 10th to the 3rd of April.
You're talking the early release day you want changed or the SAT day changed?
No, it's the early release day that would need to be changed.
Okay, from the 10th?
To the 3rd. From the 10th of April to the 3rd.
Okay, could I have a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Tammy did that one?
Larry seconded.
Larry seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Corey? All in favor? Yep, he's got to stand up, that's unanimous, I believe. Taryn, did you?
Yep.
Yep, there we go. Okay, policies, Pam, you're up.
So to accommodate the superintendent's evaluation, we've had to revisit our school board policies on the superintendent evaluation. And first of all, we have CBI, which is currently our policy. If I can dig it out. There it is. Our current policy concerns evaluations of both the superintendent and administrative personnel principals. That policy is already covered in GCOC, which is a separate policy. And GCOC covers principals' evaluations. So what we want to do is strip out the reference to the principals in this policy and focus on the superintendent's evaluation in CBI. So it doesn't include both principals and superintendents. We're not going to lose any language or policy, we're just cleaning up CBI. All of the CEB policies in our manual concern the superintendent per se and no one else in the district. So what we're asking for is a motion to approve, hopefully first and second read tonight, to take our CBI and introduce the changes shown. What I've done is stricken out the current language up here, which references the administrators' evaluations, and use the School Board Association's language for CBI, which focuses on the superintendent and his evaluation in relation to the board's goals. So here's the new language. I'm not going to read it through because it's been available to the board for this agenda. But it states that the evaluation focuses on the superintendent and is evaluated based on written criteria as established by the board and reflects the board's goals. And the evaluation will cover the following objectives, which are listed. Now, we wanted to add one to this list. So we'd like to add number 11 to the list of objectives to be assessed, which is communications and community relations, since none of the bullets here reflect community relationships. So number 11 would be added. The blue is my edits. I just like the word performance rather than progress. And then there's a second page, it's a very broad policy just describing that the evaluation is based on, we're linked to the board's goals, which we discussed tonight. So I don't know if anyone has anything they'd like to say, but could we have a motion to approve first and second read?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Oh, and I should also mention, I don't think it was changed, sorry. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
On bullet 10, then we have a sentence, "The board may choose not to annually evaluate and review every area listed above." We decided tonight in our discussion to strike that sentence since most evaluations cover all objectives and there's no need to pick and choose like a menu. We just have everything listed there. So we moved to strike that sentence. I'm very sorry about that. So as amended, could I have a motion?
So you're going to, the chair will entertain a motion to accept as written?
With this sentence stricken.
Well, it's as written. It's all written.
Right.
Okay, so. Larry and Jim. Okay, now discussion? All in favor? Yes, unanimous.
Aye.
And then we have one more policy, which is, I'll have the email. Here it is.
Just gave everyone a copy, Pam.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yep, it's right there, right here.
So I'm just bringing it up here. So this is actually the procedure for the evaluation, not the criteria, which we just went over for CBI. And it just describes the actual process of procedure. We use the School Board Association's language, so I've taken out our language, which is pretty good, but I thought the School Board Association's language was more effective. And it just states that it'll be conducted to provide constructive feedback, help in evaluating his performance, strengthen relationships, identify weaknesses for improvements. And then we identify the actual process. Now, the point of revising this policy is to take out, which you can see right in here, states that the evaluation instrument will be circulated January 1st through 18th. And so there's a timeline embedded into our current policy. But we want to have some flexibility in evaluating the superintendent during the year, depending on when the contract begins for the superintendent. So we wanted to remove references to specific months during which things will happen and leave the timeline open. So that's why we stricken this language. So we have a procedure, we'll have one evaluation a year. Members of the board will first evaluate independently using written form adopted by the board. And this personnel subcommittee will review and update the form for the board's approval. And then everyone will complete the form, including the superintendent. We may request that separate evaluation instruments for the district's employees and community members be completed when deemed useful to the process. And so that's something that the personnel committee will be tasked with. The school board will independently fill out the evaluation. We'll submit it to the board chair. The board chair will create a composite written evaluation and share that with us in a non-public session. Then we'll meet with the superintendent to review it. And the rest of the language is pretty much as written. Copies will go into files and they'll be confidential. And those are the changes. So just kind of taking out the timeline and cleaning up the language. Can I have a motion to approve first? And this is to help out Ms. Littell because we are starting the evaluation now.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim made the motion, Larry seconded. Discussion? Okay, so that's to accept it as written?
Yes.
Okay, am I correct on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. And I also would like to move to strike the obsolete forms we have in our manual. These are evaluation forms for the superintendent, for the board's use, for employees' use, for community feedback use. These are old evaluation forms. The evaluation form codes are CBI-r-e, and then there were three more, CBI-e1, -e2, and -3. Those are old evaluation forms, they're obsolete. They do not reflect the current Bloom's taxonomy of active verbs. They talk about the superintendent will understand his role. Understand is difficult to measure. Now we say, "He will meet deadlines, he will provide program decisions and so forth." So the verbs we're using now are active. And the personnel committee has developed a much better evaluation for us to use. So we'd like to...
Could you make that motion?
I would, I would like to have a motion to repeal those four old evaluation forms.
You're making this motion?
Well, I'm asking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
That's Tammy and Jim. Jim beat Larry out on that one. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I have one more. GCOC refers to administrative personnel evaluations. Mr. Chamel is director of Academics, Professional Learning, and Student Affairs. And right here it says Director of Curriculum K through 8. So we'd like to strike that entirely and replace it with... and replace it with the other title, the new title for him. Director of Academics, Professional Learning, and Student Affairs. And that's the only change for that one. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Tammy and Jim. Discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous?
I'll be back.
Is that a warning or is it not?
Sort of.
Taryn, I believe you're up.
So, it seems really loud. At the last meeting, I shared the updated Personnel Subcommittee, Superintendent Evaluation with the board. I explained the impetus behind it and why we thought that this is a good evaluation. And we decided as a board to wait until we had done all of that great policy work that we just got done with Pam. So, I move that we adopt the superintendent evaluation that has already been shared with you guys and we move forward with the evaluation process of our superintendent.
Second.
So moved.
Discussion?
Are we speaking of the evaluation the board uses? Or are we speaking of the community evaluation?
No, the superintendent evaluation that the board is doing.
For 2018.
Yes.
Okay. I have a few comments. I hope I can still make them. It looks great. I just have a few suggestions. Instead of having... Okay, for Domain A, Administrative and Leadership, Topic 1, School Board Relations. I'd like to add one at the very start of those questions under Topic 1. "Utilizes the board's annual goals and long-term planning documents as the benchmark for conducting district business."
I don't care. That's fine with me.
Because the evaluation concerns codified responsibilities, RSA responsibilities, as well as local duties.
Email it to me.
That's okay, okay.
And it's important to recognize too that the superintendent has their own goals because the board's goals may not be the superintendent's goals. Right?
Thank you.
Corey was just trying to say that, I bet, weren't you, Corey?
Yeah, exactly. I concur 100%.
Not that I shouldn't be working with you toward those goals, but there's going to be a separate document of my goals. Just wanted to...
As an executive, yes.
I'm not stuck on this at all. I just wanted you to know that.
There are administrative goals. That's true.
Yeah, yeah. It's just separate. And I just didn't want to muddy the water with that. But I'm not opposed to the language. I just think it should be considered.
Well, I'd like that added.
What is under the board thing?
I'm going to make a suggestion.
This isn't my evaluation. This is the board's Personnel Committee already.
My suggestion's going to be, you made a motion to accept this. Am I correct?
That is correct.
I'm going to ask you to withdraw it. She's going to now read the suggestions. She'll email them to you if we agree with the changes and then we'll just do this next week. Otherwise, we have to...
I don't think we want to put this off another week.
Well, I agree.
How are we going to have...
I think the suggestion...
I guess I'm looking for a document with everything in it.
Well, so was I. So, to me, the suggestion should have come before tonight when we're trying to get this done, but...
I agree.
You see where I'm coming from. I'm not saying you agree with it, but I'm just trying to keep it clean, I guess, in a sense.
That's why I put this out two weeks ago.
Yeah, Chairman, we discussed this, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt here, but we discussed this. Taryn and the Personnel, they all put a lot of work in. We had an opportunity. Not that we missed the boat, but quite frankly, we did. And as you said, Taryn, we need to get this out there. We're being a board of action this evening with the action items, the goals already. Let's continue this trend and take it for advisement for the next round.
So, can I make a suggestion, Pam?
Sure.
My suggestion would be that there's, at the end, again, as we said, this is a living document, so that could definitely go in the next revision. But there's places in here, under every section, at the end. So, like, comments regarding school board relations, there's a section. So, you could write in, when you do your evaluation or if anybody else wants to write that in too on theirs, you know, regarding blah blah, what you just said, I feel that our superintendent is blah blah blah. Do you know what I'm saying? So, that you're getting that in there, your feedback in there, and then save the revision for the next rodeo next year.
I'd like to make a suggestion. We're not going to use this between now and the next board meeting, so what's the rush?
I thought we should be started... It was my intention and I thought...
What's the schedule for doing the evaluation?
Well, you were on the Personnel Committee with me, Jim, where we decided we kind of wanted it out a month ago, but that just didn't happen.
No, but what's the present schedule? I don't recall the date specifically.
Because we didn't decide on the dates as a board.
Okay, so what's... We haven't decided on the dates. Why can't you make the change?
It's not about... Again, Jim, you and I are on the same committee.
Yeah, I understand, but...
I guess we've answered her concern.
I'm just talking about, you know, the reason of not doing it. I mean, she's got a concern.
But I think we've answered her concern with your answer, and that is that any of us can add, you know, something to it because it's kind of a living document. And then, if we like it, we can put it on next year.
We can add it on our own response.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
But can, will other people see that as something they respond to? That's the purpose of this document.
Whatever you'd like.
Okay, again, you're on the same committee with me, Jim, where we did this.
Yeah.
We put it out at the last meeting. I got no comments from anybody on it. We decided at the last meeting. It was said to me, as the whole board in public, this evaluation tool is far superior to what we had. The only issue was, we needed to repeal all those other policies in order to get on with this. And Pam even said at the last meeting, "Okay, we need to repeal those other policies, but for the sake of being expeditious, the board could start filling this out." And I said at the last meeting, "Let's not fill this out until we do it the right way, repeal the policies, and then say, 'Okay, everyone gets that,'" which I assumed would be at this meeting, "a 10-day or two-week window to fill it out, get it back to the chairperson so that we can provide our superintendent with his evaluation in an expeditious manner," which is, I thought, what everybody was on the same page for. I mean, we can edit this until kingdom come and continue, like the goals, to keep pushing it off and pushing it off and pushing it off. So, if that's what the majority of the board wants to do, then we can, I mean, we can come back every two weeks and keep editing it. But I personally would like to see us complete the superintendent's evaluation and give the guy some feedback. That's what I would like to see.
So, my...
I'm going to be Mr. Diplomatic, as we all know I am. Last week, we talked about this. You gave a week to send any suggestions or recommendations to you that you could then put that on. Nobody reported, sent you anything, and now we're asked at the meeting to have changes. I guess my... That kind of reinforces to me that, you know, she's able to put it, any of us to put on the board, you know, on the evaluation, and we can put it on next week. You kind of had your chance, and now the clock is ticking, and now it's, "Oh, let's change it." And I got to say, I support you on that.
But you can write anything in.
Everybody had the chance.
I could have given my comments within the last three minutes by now, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I could have given my edit by now.
Well, it's the whether or not we adopt it tonight, is my point. So, your motion is now, and it was seconded by who? I'm sorry.
By me.
Okay. So, any further discussion?
Yeah, I agree with everything Taryn said. I just don't see the urgency of avoiding this one suggestion. We can...
I'm not avoiding a suggestion. I'm trying to get on with the evaluation process that we already agreed to.
Right, I understand.
This is the very first public meeting where we've had the document aired or discussion.
That isn't true. I had it at the last meeting.
But it wasn't on the projector. We weren't actually discussing it. We just discussed getting the policies in order first.
But there was a call to have all the final comments.
Yeah, and I had about eight different committee meetings in the last two weeks.
We're cutting the weeds here.
Any comments you want to...
I think we need to move the motion.
Please do.
So, all in favor in accepting as written?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, opposed? Okay, two. So, the motion carries. The two were Dr. Brown and Tammy Mahoney. Okay.
So, can I follow up to that? Which now, we need to decide. I would like to hand this out to every board member, and I would like you, Mr. Chairman, to set a deadline when you want these back in the SAU office. So, I'd say 10 days or two weeks should be sufficient time.
I was going to say, okay, I was going to say by the next meeting, but...
Well, that's two weeks, right?
That's two weeks, you know. That way, when we come to the meeting, we can drop it off. I mean, I'm here a couple, two, three times a week.
So, the directions for what to do are on here. Sealed envelope addressed to the Chairman of the Board.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just send it, yeah. Put down evaluation and give it to Phyllis.
All right, so I'm handing these out. There's one for me.
So, put down evaluation and send it to Phyllis.
And Tom, make sure you fill one because you have to do a self-evaluation.
All right. But this way, the next meeting, you can bring it with you and give it to Phyllis if you'd like.
All right, this is too much work. I can't do this in two weeks.
Suck it up.
Your homework assignment is...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, all right. And it's on time, and we take 10 points off every day it's late. Okay.
So, point of information. We have another evaluation here. It was from 4.5, School Board Evaluation. Are we discussing that tonight?
That's up to you guys. If you want to discuss it tonight or put that off till the next... To me, that is not as important as this.
It's already 9:30. We've got a public comment, other business agenda, and we have a non-public.
So, I'm, put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, so we can cover that. Okay, Phyllis, did you get that for the next agenda? Okay, this is time for the second comment. If there are any comments, I think we probably talked about the NASDAQ study sufficiently, but if you feel it's important to bring up something, by all means, bring it up. And seeing no one raising their hand or getting up, no, we're done, moving on.
Annie Collier Newton. I just want to comment that I find it really distressing that every time something comes up, that the default seems to be, Mr. Chairman, that you say, "Well, let's table it and discuss it the next time." Why don't you just hash it out and get it done with?
I said that.
I get, I'm just telling you, coming from the public, that that happens time and time and time again, and it's just so inefficient. And it's frustrating to have you guys not reach decisions. It's the reason why goal-setting took so long and almost you put the student, the superintendent evaluation off. So, I'd just like to suggest that that stop being the default and you take action and say, "This is on our agenda. Somebody has something to say, let's say it." Or you already had your chance to say it, and let's move on. Either one is fine, but tabling it to talk about in another two weeks, that's just, it's very inefficient. Thank you.
Just to clarify, a few months ago, I made the decision with superintendent that if it's not on the agenda, we're not going to discuss it. And the reason for that is that if it's, if we suddenly put something on the agenda and people don't know about it, then they didn't come in because maybe they want to talk about it, but they didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, so they didn't come in. So, that's why if it's not on the agenda, plus the school board members aren't necessarily able to discuss it because all of a sudden, we're going to drop something on them. So, I try to pretty much stay right on the agenda. In this particular case, that policy was not on the agenda. I'm not prepared to talk about it. I don't even know what that, what the nuts and bolts about it are. But maybe there's some at home who would like to come in on some other agenda and say, "Gee, if I'd known that was on the agenda, you're going to talk about it." I ought to come in. So, that's why.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Excuse me, Annie. I've got a gentleman, I think, who was standing in waiting.
But I wanted to follow up because you misunderstood my comments.
Annie, he was waiting to talk before you stood up. So, if I can have this gentleman, then I'll, you have to get to him. No problem. Go for it.
Ian McGregor, Newton. I just came up with another thought. I wanted to put on public comment just for you, the board members, based on the NASDAQ study. As the elected officials, moving forward in whatever timeframe we put, you know, we talked soonest, two years possibly, with following any of these recommendations on schools and facilities and grade reconfigurations and all that, based on their study for projections that only go out as far as they do for 10 years. There was a great point that I was thinking about for a while. It's made by one person, talking about the bigger picture because these decisions that are going to be made, both by the public with definite suggestions that come from the board, who are the professionals and the administrators who put together the plan, this will affect the communities that my family and a number of other families plan to be in possibly for 30-plus years when you look at renovating, rebuilding, additions, all of this. So, just because we're seeing a 10-year projection of a downturn, what happens at the 20-year mark and the 30-year mark? Make sure we're considering that because it's great. If we say, "Great, we'll focus on the 20-year low of 25% and that's what we focus on and that's what we build to and that's what we develop our school system around." And then 10 years later, we're saying we need to build a middle school at the tune of 22.3 million.
Okay, I want to, it was apparent to me that you misunderstood my comments and I want to make sure that I'm clear. What I was discussing were two things which are on the agenda for tonight, which were the goals and which were the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation. The goals were fine, those have been on the agenda month after month after meeting after meeting after meeting and were finally dealt with, and thank you very much for doing it. The evaluation was a thing that you almost tabled to say, "Let's discuss it in two more weeks." That's the trend that I hope will stop being the default, that you will deal with the things that are on the agenda as they are there instead of tabling them because somebody has an idea. Thank you.
Cheryl, here.
Thanks, Cheryl Gannon Kingston. I would like to also reiterate my appreciation for the board approving your goals this evening. Policy BA. Purpose: To assure that the school board defines operational goals on an annual basis in May of each year. This is the policy. I would hope that you have a goal, even though some of you may not be here next year because of elections or choice not to run again or stay on the board, that you make a goal for yourself, to do your goals by the day that is specified in this policy. It continues year after year that the goals are not made until September or October, and then you say, "Well, how can we possibly achieve these goals in this amount of time?" Do it when you need to do it. You know it's coming up. You're elected in March.[1624.94] you need to do it. You know it's coming up. You're elected in March. Please, for the sake of achieving what you want to achieve for the student body, for the facilities, please don't put it off. So thank you for doing it tonight. Another thing that was mentioned tonight was putting a restriction on the amount that the budget should go up. And a comment was made, given by a cost per pupil, this is an achievement, a realistic goal. One of the things that I thought the NASDAQ study was supposed to look at was, why does our cost per pupil seem to be higher than neighboring districts or districts with similar populations? I didn't see anything in that NASDAQ study that said or addressed that concern.
Wait, wait, wait. It was not designed to do that. It was designed to study facilities and enrollments.
Okay.
We have to make the decisions about the budget. I just want to be clear, for anyone in the public or on the TV, that the NASDAQ study, that group of people never ever promised us budget projections.
No.
And I just don't want to have, I'm just trying to clarify.
Oh, not budget projections. I'm saying that it was supposed to look at, or I understood that there were some people saying that they felt that one of the results from the study would be to examine why, or see if there were factors that came out as to why our cost per pupil was higher. And there was nothing in that. So to say that, we still don't know. I don't believe we do know. I haven't seen any evidence here as to why our cost per pupil is higher. I think that's something worthy of study, but to say that we should set an arbitrary number for what the budget should be increased because our cost per pupil is higher, when we don't know the root reason why, I don't think that's acceptable. And again, I commend the board for not choosing that as a goal. Thank you.
Okay. We did the NASDAQ workshop.
Michelle had a, she needs this to-
Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry. You're right. I checked you off, Michelle. Sorry. Budget timeline and approval.
This should be relatively quick. Each year, a draft budget timeline is presented to the board for approval. This draft that you have in your packet identifies the key dates in the budget process and was done in conjunction with the Budget Committee Chair to look at the dates where the board would meet together and hearings would be done. So it's really at this point, just for adoption. I'm happy to respond to any questions if folks have that, any questions.
Have a draft for each of us, or are you?
It was in the packet.
It's in your packet.
Okay, it's in the packet. Okay.
Yep. It's attachment 8.5 in your packet.
Annie, did you happen to see this?
Oh, yeah. She helped, yeah.
Okay, no, I want to make sure the Budget Committee, but I wanted to make sure you were all, both on the same page. Yeah, okay, okay.
Oh, you actually have already approved it?
Yes.
Oh, great, thanks. I was wondering if that was the next meeting.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Thank you, Annie.
Okay, so make a motion to accept the budget calendar as written?
So moved.
Okay, there you got Larry and Jim, and I'll let you decide. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a copy of this, Phyllis?
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes it, except for other business. I don't believe we have any other business. Anybody got anything they want to bring up? Okay. Next meeting agenda. I think we've got at least two things, Phyllis, that they're going to write down on that one. Okay, the next Sandburn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 3, 2018, at 6:00 PM to roughly 9:00 PM in the library at the Sandburn Regional High School. I now need a motion for a non-public under RSA 91A colon 3, 2, C, and D.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay. Give Tammy a second on that. Larry?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Taryn?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
That's unanimous by voice.